So, seeing the presence of a quorum, calling this meeting to order at 6:15 PM. Meeting of the AMERIS School Committee. As a reminder, this meeting is recorded and usually it's live broadcast by AMERIS Media, but we are having some technical issues. Oh, they did fix them? Okay.
They said that the first little bit, it was live broadcast.
Okay, great. So, that's been fixed, apparently. So, we are now live. So, first order of business is to approve minutes of May 15th. And as I mentioned in the last meeting, I'd like to get into the habit of just moving and seconding if that's okay with everybody, and then we can move into discussion and changes if that's amenable. I see nodding heads still, so I will take a motion to approve minutes. Mr. Demling?
I move to approve the minutes of May 15th, 2018.
Second? Thank you. Everybody a moment to look these over. Okay. All those in favor approving the minutes for May 15th? Raise your hand. Any objections? Any abstentions? Mr. Nakajima. Okay, so, three in favor, just barely approved, and one abstention, Mr. Nakajima.
He wasn't present at that meeting.
Yes, I see that.
Accurately recorded in the minutes.
We're off to a great start.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, and before we move into announcements, I wanted to ask if the committee is amenable to a few agenda changes, because we have Mr. Nakajima leaving before 7:00 or 7:00 o'clock?
6:50.
6:50. So, we only have him for a short amount of time, so I just wanted to make sure that for certain items on the agenda that we have here still. So, what I would like to propose is that we move, we have the first two items stay as reflected on the agenda, we move the superintendent evaluation vote immediately following public comments, and that we move subcommittee assignments immediately after that. Does that sound okay to everybody? I'd like to do this by the book, if that's okay, and just get a motion for the agenda change. Mr. Demling?
I move to update the agenda as described by the chair.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor of amending the agenda? Thank you very much. Okay, so, are there any announcements from the committee? Mr. Demling?
So, most of us are probably aware that this happened today, but given that we're at a school committee meeting, I thought it would be appropriate to at least acknowledge a pretty large and sobering event occurred today in the history of funding of public education in Massachusetts, and that's the Mass Supreme Judicial Court struck down the Fair Share Amendment, which was a constitutional amendment to add progressive tax, which, to roll it up, you know, in terms of connecting it to public ed funding, which provided a very large revenue stream dedicated to education and transportation. And for anybody who's been following the history of public education in Massachusetts, they know that public education is underfunded by about $2 billion. We all know this. All the lawmakers know it, and it's just a matter of who's going to acknowledge that this is a problem and not run away from the revenue issue. And so, this has been the hoped-for solution to that problem, and it was struck down today. And there really is no easy backup. To get progressive tax reform is a number of years, and so, we're going to have to look pretty hard at what the state's priorities are. And in terms of our advocacy and the public's advocacy, in terms of where you focus your energy, you know, I think, I would say two things. One is, we still have the significant and major drain of charter schools on our public schools all over, not just this town. I think that has to be, continued to be steadfastly defended against. And I think the other thing is, we have an election coming up in November, and that's going to decide our state leadership. And our state leadership sets the tone for what we value and for how we manage public education. If you feel as upset as I do about what happened today in public education and what it's going to mean for the future, then you ought to galvanize your attention and your energy to the change that you feel is appropriate at the state level. So, that's all I want to say about that.
I think those are excellent points, and we have certainly heard for over a year now, people's concerns about what they were calling the Fair Share Amendment, and saying that it was so critically important in order to fund all these different gaps, right, in our state budget. And so, it is extremely disappointing that that has been sort of taken out of the running at this point. I think that, you know, again, though, this has been a multi-year-long process, and so, we are hopeful that this will come back around. And I think, as Mr. Demling just mentioned, with pressure from the community, from the public, and from other legislators, we could potentially see something like this that comes back up again in the ballot, because it is such an incredibly important topic. Mr. Nakajima.
Just to add to that, I don't think we have another three, I don't think we should wait another three or four years before we address the revenue issues we have. And one of the things that's happened, and I'm not blaming anyone, because I thought the Fair Share Amendment was terrific, but I think it's been easy for the legislature to go with a no new taxes sort of approach in the interim, because the whole hope was, oh, well, the public's going to pass this amendment, and then all of a sudden, we're going to have lots of money, and there'll be so strong public will behind it, that it'll alleviate the political pressure of taking the risk of a vote that would raise revenue. And I think now, over the next two or three years, the pressure's going to be back on the legislature to say, are you going to step up and find a way to actually fund, if not up to the level of $2 billion? You know, half of that would make a huge difference, in addition to any other changes that are made. And people have to step up.
Excellent points. Any other comments or announcements from the committee? Okay. All right, so I will move to public comment. It is 6:22. We had this as an item, excuse me, on the agenda for 6:20. There is a tornado warning in effect today at this time, and I want to welcome Ms. Spitzer, who is joining us a little bit late as a result of that. No worries. So, I don't see anyone in the public right now, so I think we can probably safely assume that folks will not be coming tonight for this meeting, and I don't blame them. Okay, so, in the interest of time, we're going to move on to the changes in the agenda that I had mentioned earlier. So, we are going to move on to the superintendent evaluation discussion and vote. So, this item is in your pocket and was also emailed out to the committee by Ms. Moorelin this morning. So, I just wanted to say a few words before we get started, and then also ask Mr. Demling if he wants to pipe in. So, the report that you have in front of you was prepared by both me and the vice-chair of the committee, Mr. Demling, based on the individual evaluations that were submitted by me, Mr. Demling, and Mr. Nakajima. We have two other members on the AMERIS School Committee, for those members of the public who may be watching remotely, but as decided previously, new members have the right to participate in written evaluations, or they can forego that process and just participate in discussion afterwards. So, we had two new members basically say they forego that this time around, which is completely okay. And as decided previously, previous members who are no longer on the committee cannot participate in evaluations. The three participating committee members submitted their written evaluations via Survey Monkey tool, created specifically for this purpose. The survey was open for just over two weeks to allow members enough time to review the superintendent's artifact documents and supporting evidence, review preview notes, previous notes, and to receive input from the community before submitting their evaluations. The chairs then received PDFs of the individual evaluations and compiled the data for the summative evaluation. So, this report is the compilation of all of those individual evaluations that were done. This year, we added, we did something a little different at the AMERIS School Committee level. We added in some charts to show, visually show the rankings of the different committee members, and this is actually taken from the regional committee's playbook, if you will. We sort of liked the way they did that, adding some charts last year, and thought that worked really nicely. But we didn't want to lose the narrative flow of the AMERIS School Committee's style and format, so we kept that as well. So, it's a slightly longer document, but hopefully comprehensive enough and helps explain visually and some of the rationale and thinking of the individual members' evaluations. So, this report is before you in draft form. It's open to input and additional comments, if you'd like to make them. You know, we all recognize that the superintendent's evaluation is one of the most important things that we have as, you know, responsibilities as school committee members. So, I want to make sure that we give everyone the chance to speak up and share their thoughts on this report and process, and, you know, on the year-to-date, if you wish. And then, at the end of this discussion, and with the committee's permission, we'll be voting on the document. So, with that, I'm going to open this section up for discussion. I'm going to ask the superintendent, if that's okay, to say a few words, maybe after the committee has had a chance to speak. But then, you know, Mr. Demling, if there's anything you want to say before we open it up just more broadly?
Yeah, just briefly, we, we had discussed, you and I briefly, about the purpose of the document and how it's sort of threefold. One is to communicate to the school committee and have it be an expression of the school committee's will. The other is to give just another type of feedback to the superintendent. So, there are the individual evaluations that superintendent can access at a deeper level, but it also sort of tries to tie it up. But we also wanted to make it readable to the general public, so if you have absolutely no background in a lot of the things that are mentioned, that it would be understandable, so that if you had, you know, five minutes and you wanted to say, oh, how did the year go for the superintendent, that you would be able to access that. So, that's the kind of tone we tried to strike. In terms of the charts, so because there were only three of us, my first draft at doing charts looked fairly silly, because the percentages and, you know, bars and whatnot look just sort of trivial when you're doing, you know, 0, 33, or 67, or 100. So, this was a way to show where all the data points came in, and yet still show what the ratings were for each of the goals, each of the standards, and the overall. So, that's kind of how we approached that.
Great. Okay, so, any comments, discussion?
Well, I appreciate the work that I'm into it, and as somebody who's worked on another product previously, the grass is always greener on the other side. To me, this looks like a challenge has been put before any other committees to see how well they can do.
Gauntlet thrown.
And I think that, I mean, I think, to me, the evaluation process is, I know it's been a long-term source of discussion in our community and in various school committees over the years. It's such an interesting and challenging process, because on the one hand, you're taking stock of a year of work, and you're looking at a variety of goals that were set and assessing the progress that's been made, and that makes complete sense. And on another level, because there's a state rubric that we're following, there's a form-fitting element to which you're, you're thinking in an organic way about what you've experienced as a school district. And then, you're, you know, doing something unnatural to it, glomming onto it, you know, the work of wonderful bureaucrats in Malden or something, to make it look different, you know, to conform with this bureaucratic structure. So, it can be hard to feel like you're getting across what you're trying to get across, but I think in this case, I'd say two things. One, because of the primacy of our budgetary issues this year, I think that really stands out in terms of how the budget was handled, at least it did for me. And then, second, again, when you're looking at things toward the end of the year, your mind has to go back to January, and then if you're lucky, go back to last summer, and think that the amount of work that went into the enrollment working groups, the amount of work that went into staff development, associated with any number of topics that have come up over this work, and look again holistically and organically at the progress we've made, and more importantly, the role that the superintendents articulated in that process. And I think when you do that, this comes out as a fair assessment, in my view.
Somebody who didn't participate in the evaluation, I think I'm going to get recognized. But I just want to say that I've read over the summary, and, you know, given my short tenure on the school committee, I also support the conclusions of this. And I, the reason I didn't want to participate was just the difficulty in sort of separating, you know, as a participant in the enrollment working group, looking at it, you know, from the outside perspective, and just separating my experiences, both as a community member and now as a school committee member, and where that line is over the year was really difficult. So, I want to say thank you to Ms. Ordones and Ms. Demling. Thank you very much for putting this together, and I really do like the graphs, so thank you for doing that.
Mr. Demling?
So, I would, I would second what Carrie said. I, and I talked, I think, with individually, individually with other members about being wary of being able to separate my experience as a community member slash candidate from my experience as a member of the committee. But I will, before I comment on that, I, you said this was very long. I thought this was actually an excellent report. I thought it was very concise, and I loved the graphs, and if you call them graphs with the dots. I thought, so, reading this as somebody who wasn't involved in setting up the goals and knowing the rubric beforehand, I found it actually really easy to comprehend and grasp and get sort of a full picture, having, you know, just in these whatever 10 pages or eight pages that it was. So, well done, and I think it's a great model for going forward. I'll also say that it reflects, you know, the work, Mr. Morris, that you did in the artifact document was substantial and really, really helpful, again, for somebody viewing it more as a community member than as somebody who'd been working with you over the past year. As a comprehensive document, I think the two documents together will give our community a really rich perspective of what you've been doing and what the district has been working on over the last year. So, and I do agree with these. I think, you know, for me, again, as a community member, what stands out really is the enrollment working group, and then, and the fact that I knew so much coming into this attests to the strength of the progress that you've made on the communication. So, I totally endorse and support the ratings that you guys provided in this report on that aspect.
Mr. Demling?
So, just from a content perspective, I've seen the superintendent's previous year, so, in terms of rating it, I did find it rather challenging, kind of echoing Mr. Nakajima's comments about fitting your organic experience into this bureaucratic format, particularly the difference between what proficient means, which indicates rigorous expectations were fully met, and exemplary. And exemplary does not mean perfect without the possibility of improvement. So, where exactly is that line? There are many of these that I could have gone, you know, I think made a reasonable case either way, and so, that was one challenge. You know, that being said, and because of the budgetary issues, Mr. Nakajima also mentioned, I thought it was a very strong year. My sort of theme as I was reviewing all of the work was that, you know, given the magnitude of the budget impact and the unexpected nature of it, and its continuing evolution that had to be responded to in real time, I thought it was very impressive with the amount of forward-thinking work that continued to happen, particularly with the enrollment working group, as well as other initiatives, the homework policy evolution I thought was a standout. The, getting something, even though, you know, it's a relatively small thing, having a standard feedback on the IEP process, I thought was really, I really liked seeing that. Speaking of someone who's been in IEP meetings, you know, from a parent perspective, it can be really difficult to respond to all the different aspects of one's experience there, and then to feed that back in a beneficial way to the district. So, I think that's really, that's something that could be built upon in the future, you know, in terms of evolving the spirit of continuous improvement, which I guess is the general theme that I really appreciated in Dr. Morris's work this year, was that even though we have this budget crisis, that continuous improvement doesn't stop. In fact, you know, thinking back more than a year ago, after the school building project failed, the very first thing that Dr. Morris went into was, okay, well, these other enrollment issues are not going to solve themselves, and they still have to be addressed, you know, how do we move forward? And so, I appreciated his initiative in moving that forward. And the other thing I really liked about how he ran that, or I should say facilitated that effort, as well as the homework group is another good example of this, it wasn't just feedback for the sake of feedback. It wasn't an administrator coming in with a pre-baked solution already 9% formed and just saying, okay, tell me what you like or don't like, and I'll clean it up. It was really facilitating the solution and taking people's feedback in a meaningful way, and you could see the evolution of the thinking from meeting to meeting, and I thought that was really commendable. It's a really great model going forward. You know, that being said, having productively pushed forward so many things in parallel, the next challenge, of course, is to make sure none of them fall off the rails, because we have a lot of irons in the fire right now. And, you know, so, not just making sure that one of those doesn't lose attention, but if, as one thing is evolving, say the regionalization exploration, that has potential impacts with where our special ed programs might be located. And so, being able to look at things from a 60,000-foot level and bringing people together ahead of time, before those cars crash, I think would be important. And I guess that the one last thing I would say is that I appreciate the quiet and productive way in which Dr. Morris has gone about providing a very rich level of professional development for our staff, particularly with regards to equity and social justice issues. You know, there's been a lot of noise and a lot of good discussion and a lot of activity around these themes in our town and our district this year, and I think it's easy to either be very effusive in praise and speech or very negative in criticism and speech. And what I really appreciate is that Dr. Morris seems to take the approach of actions speak louder than words. And when we're talking about these things, our solution should be staff-driven, like the PD Day was, the contour of that was driven by staff input, and the next one would be driven by the feedback from that. It should be staff-driven and applicable to the classroom, you know, and that should be going on, not in response to whatever praise or criticism is coming from the outside, but from the classroom and from the staff. I just really appreciate all the specific examples, I'm going to all of them, about how those were illustrated throughout the year, so.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll jump in too, I guess. You know, I do want to say thank you to Dr. Morris for putting together, you know, a wonderful artifact document and providing a lot of information for the committee. But I think even beyond that, the presentations that we had prior to the actual artifact document that was shared, and during the course of the year, I think there's been a lot of back and forth that has been incredibly helpful for, you know, this process, and just for the committee to understand the work of the district, right, and to understand where Dr. Morris has been leading efforts, and, you know, and things have been progressing from last year, when it was interim position, to this year, when I think, you know, he had a chance to actually implement a lot of the ideas that we had to discuss last year. And the enrollment working group is one example of that. I think also just the dual-language programming discussions that we've had, right, this came from, you know, the failed building project, but it was also conversations about how do we help our schools be the absolute best schools that they can be, and how do we address the needs of, you know, growing English language learner, you know, community, and making sure that they feel embraced and that they feel like they are part of this community and well-supported with our, you know, our curriculum and our, everything that we do in the school. So, I really appreciate all of that. I also, you know, want to say that I really appreciate the 360-degree survey that Dr. Morris used again this year. I had, you know, commented on it last year when it was first implemented. I believe that that's an incredibly important tool for managers, but also for the community to see that there are, you know, opportunities for people to have their say, and if they are concerned about things, or if they just want to, you know, provide some feedback and input on, you know, ideas that they want to do differently, that that survey is an excellent opportunity for that to happen. And the fact that it gets taken seriously and gets incorporated into all of this, and it's not all glowing, like there's some, you know, there's some challenges that are shown there, and that's what I'm interested in seeing too, because I like reading between the lines. I want to be able to, you know, I think praise is wonderful, but we also want to see when there's gaps, you know? So, I think all of that said, you know, I do want to highlight, I, in reviewing the three different evaluations, independent evaluations, I thought that there was, you know, a lot of recurring themes, and obviously, you know, people have been hearing the similar thing, you know, similar things from the superintendent, which is good, means we're all paying attention. But I also just wanted to say that I think that there's some opportunities here for growth in the coming year. And, you know, one of the things that I actually had incorporated in my evaluation was around, you know, wanting to, I felt that we actually need to do a little bit better in terms of data collection and data gathering. And the reasons for that is that we rely a lot on surveys to provide information, and that's only one aspect or one way of collecting data and information from folks, right? And then, I think there's also, you know, there's other ways of soliciting input and feedback in a more regular fashion, and also that, you know, so there's the qualitative aspects of surveys sometimes that are lost, because people don't have an opportunity to really, you know, write down what they're thinking or report that back. And so, I really welcome us thinking about that in the future, about how to incorporate qualitative feedback in a better, in better fashion than we do now. But also, we're missing, I think, is sort of this metadata, you know, information that connects back to, it's not in survey form, so I think it's more about ensuring that our educators and that our administrators are routinely collecting information about what's going on in the classrooms, how our policies are impacting students directly, and bringing that back to us. And superintendent's role is to be the gatherer of that information, right, and proactively, you know, collect that to share it back with the committee, because it's important information for us to have as we're thinking about policy setting for the new year, right? And as we're thinking about goals for the budget and all of that. And so, I really hope that we can do a better job of thinking a little bit outside the box, or a lot outside the box, in terms of collecting that kind of data. And we've had conversations, you know, at a regional level around climate surveys and all of that. This is a different population, so we can't necessarily replicate that, but I do know that there are other tools available, and there's other resources that we could be tapping to make sure that we're getting the information we need from families, you know, from educators, et cetera. I also, you know, just want to say that I think, you know, I learned a couple of things about sort of things that are happening in the district during the course of the evaluation and reading the artifacts document, which is great. I mentioned sort of globally before about us paying attention during meetings. I think that there's also been some stuff that sometimes, quite frankly, has been left out of meetings, right? And so, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, mindful of, there's a lot of really good things that happen in the district, and then there's things that, you know, are not great, right, in terms, I'm thinking specifically around math performance, you know, and I commended the superintendent, just to contextualize for folks who may not know what I'm talking about, that the administrators and staff and superintendent realized that there was a slight decline in math performance and immediately took action, right? And that was data-driven, which is fantastic. And that kind of gets back to my earlier point, right, about the importance of that data and why we need to be collecting it, you know, in a better, you know, in a more regular basis and more consistently. But that was the first time I had heard about that, right? And so, I think that, you know, it's important for us to be able to hear about those kinds of gaps and opportunities throughout the year, so that we can pivot and address them when we need to, you know, and before they become bigger things or anything like that, you know? But overall, I do want to just express, you know, my support for Dr. Morris and the work that he has done this past year. I think, you know, he's not perfect, none of us are perfect, but he's been trying very hard to be faithful to our mission and to the work of the district. And also, I really appreciate the way that he engages topics seriously and, you know, pays attention to them, and so, I think that's the kind of leadership that we're looking for and that we need at this point. So, I also just want to say one last thing, that this evaluation is based specifically on the goals that we all had agreed on in the previous year, right? So, there's, you know, there's a limit to it, right? It doesn't encompass everything that we've talked about here, even in school committee. It doesn't encompass, you know, other issues or matters that may have come up during the course of the year, and so, there are limits to this evaluation. But that said, I think a lot of the information, the artifacts, the backup, you know, the background that was provided to all of us and that we've all discussed, shows a very strong, you know, forward trajectory and all of that, so. Mr. Nakajima?
I think that's interesting. I agree with a lot of what you just said, or pretty much everything you just said. I had, because of the strength of some of the, or the scope of some of the initiatives that had been underway this past year, like the various subgroups of the enrollment working group or the homework work stream, I hadn't, I had not viewed this sort of data or sort of metastructure question of work as significant, I'm not saying it isn't, so I'm not really disagreeing with you, it's sort of interesting commentary. I was struggling with that myself, because to me, we'll talk about this in a different meeting, I considered that to be a much more glaring weakness at a different level of the school district, and something that obviously we'd talked about doing, but we hadn't done it. And the absence of not having done it meant that, I think, at a different level of our district, a lot of our, a lot of our, a lot of our work and sort of the directionality of it, the focus, the oversight and the dialogue, wasn't structured as well as it should have been, because we hadn't made as much progress on it at the elementary level, our level here, because we started the year with a very clear but fairly expansive set of things we were working on, and those things did encompass both an organic process, both from the community but also with the staff. the focus, the oversight and the dialogue, wasn't structured as well as it should have been because we hadn't made as much progress on it at the elementary level, our level here. Because we started the year with a very clear but fairly expansive set of things we were working on. And those things did encompass both an organic process, both from the community but also with the staff, a look at best practices and research and data. I thought it was generally a stronger year because of that. I agree with what you're saying, that if you take a pivot from this evaluation here to then saying, all right, once we conclude this process, we're essentially kicking off a new process. I think that question, because we're not going to go into a year with a bunch of enrollment working groups and, you know, the continuing implementation of the homework group and stuff, it's going to beg the question of how do we ensure we have some kind of ongoing structure between the superintendent and the school committee? Because I think that actually is extraordinarily valuable. And I explicitly say it that way because I suspect the chair would agree with me when I say this. That is that to me, the gathering of data and the reporting and sort of the analysis of it goes hand in hand with a process of creating a structure for, you know, strategic planning, dialogue and goal setting. And so to me, I look at them as, I look at them as one objective, one overarching objective that's integrative. But obviously, if you don't have good data and you're not tracking things, then you don't have much to talk about. You do the strategic planning side of things too. So I agree with that. But I mean, it has, in that context, and I like, I appreciate the fact that you said at the end, the point that for anyone sort of watching within the community or engaging with us in the community, there are many things you can talk about during the course of the year. But your comment that the evaluation is structured essentially around the goals that are set at the superintendent at the beginning of the year is a really important framework for understanding what we're doing here. And that doesn't mean that in general, we're not finding it proficient or something. But my point is, it's not a document that answers every question somebody could possibly have. And that's actually a creature of Massachusetts state law, essentially.
Any other comments or questions about this piece before we turn it over to Dr. Morris? Dr. Morris?
Maybe I prefer to wait until after the body has voted to jump in with comments.
Okay.
I don't want there to be reality or perception of, you know.
Mr. Nakajima?
I move to approve the superintendent evaluation document as submitted.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
A second?
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments before we vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as put forth by Mr. Nakajima, raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you. Dr. Morris?
Yes, I'll be brief. First of all, thank you for the ongoing feedback. It's critically important. And one point I'd like to briefly make is that, as I said, this is a panel meeting as well and it goes for any committee that I'm working on. There's this document, which as you just noted, is specific to Amherst, is specific to the Massachusetts. I can. I apologize.
Thank you.
So I'll start over again, I think. So I appreciate the feedback that the committee offered and the level of detail that was in the document that was presented and voted. And I think for any committee I'm on, I want the members to know that there's some, as was just noted in the meeting, there's some feedback that's kind of governed by the way evaluations happen in Massachusetts. And it's not intended to capture every piece of feedback that one might want to offer. And that I'm very open and the verb I'll use is encouraged. I would encourage committee members, if they so choose, to meet with me to share feedback on any topic at all because my dedication is I want to be better every year. I want the district to be better every year. And this document really is helpful in that way. And there may be other types of feedback that committee members have that they would like to share that also might contribute to that. So, you know, anytime in the next couple of weeks that people, if you think of something or think of just wanting to come in and meet, I really encourage that because it's a good time of reflection. After an evaluation's done, it's also a good time, kind of in between the span of the end of one year and the beginning of next. I think when we get to late August, the feedback will be helpful, but not nearly as helpful as it would be in early July. So I just would encourage anyone to come in and we can talk about that.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Nakajima, thank you. Okay, so the next order of business is subcommittee assignments, per the change that we made earlier to our agenda. So Debbie shared a list of subcommittees with the committee. It should be in your packets. And we just want to go through these and basically see if any jump out at you. I'm hoping we can get through these pretty quickly. I'm, you know, I'm hoping folks have taken a look before. But I'll take any recommendations you have for the best way to go about making selections, especially since we just lost a committee member. Mr. Dumbling.
I think we should assign Mr. Nakajima to every committee. We would be done.
I think Mr. Nakajima might have a problem with that, but yeah.
I just have a question.
Yeah?
There are multiple committees that I would be happy to serve on, so rather, and I definitely have preferences, so if we could maybe see if there are some that, how much overlap there is on interest? If we could go through quickly before deciding on the set for each and everyone.
Sounds like a great plan.
To see completely if there's one that only one of us is interested in, then maybe we should.
And I just had a question with the collaborative is.
Okay, so do you want to answer?
Yeah, and I was just there on Friday and we talked about needing to have an Amherst member. That wasn't the agenda topic, but it's not an open meeting, so people are able to share with their pieces. So the collaborative, every region in Massachusetts has an educational collaborative that supports it in a variety of ways. So educational collaboratives, the history of them was originally set up to support low-incidence special education needs. So needs that districts, particularly small districts, were having trouble managing and supporting students themselves. At this point in 2018, they certainly still do that. There is a special education site on the collaborative campus. Also, they have contracted services, they offer it to their member districts. However, the collaborative offers a lot more. They offer professional development. The reason I'm there is they're the group that organizes monthly Western Mass superintendent meetings to provide professional development for us. Mr. Sheen attends curriculum leader, curriculum coordinator, professional development. They had a social justice workshop this spring that a lot of our, a number of our staff went to. So they're intended to organize and support the work of their member districts. Ours covers a wide area, it's all of Franklin and Hampshire County. So geographically and demographically, it supports very diverse districts, some, you know, really, really tiny districts. We're considered, us and Northampton, I would guess, are the two largest districts that work with our educational collaborative. And so the idea of the word collaborative is that it's managed by its member districts. So every district has the opportunity to send a member. They meet once a month in meetings that, there's a lot of districts, so it's not as small like this. They always want me to remind you that, the committees, that they serve dinner at their meetings, which is a draw for some people, would be a draw for me if I was in your boat. But it's really, to be more serious, they want to make sure that their work is supporting their member districts. And the only way they know how to do that is if it's managed, if the organization is managed by the member district. So that's how, that's what the collaborative does and that's the role that representatives play. But they literally vote on things. It's not a casual meeting there, official membership that comes and votes on the different aspects. And much like us, what we found out, and this is not a secret, is, you know, when their districts, like ours, have financial troubles, so does the collaborative. So as member districts in Western Mass, a couple of times it's come up tonight, actually, as districts struggle with finances, they're in the same boat as us to try and identify what their priorities are and how, what's the most important thing that they do to support their member districts? And they can't do that without committee members from the different districts offering that feedback and voting.
Great, thank you. So maybe we just go down the list and see what folks say and sort of have some descriptions for those who are new to the committee. So, Dr. Morris, do you want to maybe just run us through quickly?
Yeah, Amherst Educational Foundation, so they're a nonprofit organization that has, is really well-known for their grant process and the trivia B, which is right in front of Ms. Erdonis, I noticed the water bottle. But they, one of the most public things they do is they raise funds and then they support teacher grant programs in our schools and a whole host of examples that we've gone over throughout the year. Their work and the school committee liaison allows them to be connected to the ongoing work of the district. It's not a huge time commitment either, or it typically hasn't been in the past, I should say.
Mr. Dumbling?
Was that role even filled this past year? Do we know?
I don't know. Do you know, Doug?
My guess is that it was not.
Yeah, I don't remember anybody, actually. I mean, some of these, the reality is that, you know, this is a fairly small committee. And so, you know, and we're already stretched and serving several multiple committees and subcommittees and all of that. So I think that there, you know, there have been, on occasion, a couple of these that have not been filled. So it's something to keep in mind. I think we're striving as hard as we can to fill all the slots, but it may not happen. So maybe let's just review all of these and then we'll come back and see if anybody wants to do them. So Audit Committee for the Town of Amherst? Dr. Morris?
So it meets once a year, we have an audit done every year. And this particular committee, as opposed to the region, the audit is done as part of an audit of the Town of Amherst finances. So it meets once a year to review the audit and the recommendations that are made each year and bring that back and work with Mr. Mangano a little bit on that. Our audits have not shown, knock on wood, you know, huge things, but there's always small things to improve. So it's not a time-consuming one, but certainly important in terms of our financial books and making sure that we're following all the, not just the regulation, but the best practices that relates to our financial picture.
Could I just ask if any of these have a specific time of year that they're particularly active? And like for the audit, does it happen in a particular time of year?
It doesn't have to. Typically, it happens around this time of year, or at least it has in the past. But there's not a steadfast rule about it.
Okay. Amherst Media Liaison?
So Amherst Media, thank you, Amherst Media, for doing all the incredible work they do.
For everything you do, yes.
And so Amherst Media has kind of folks from different committees that it works on meet so that it can work on any issues. Like last year, for instance, there was a new contract, so that there was perhaps a larger role of the school committee. Or it's a long-term contract, so it probably won't be at that level again for the life of the current committee membership. But it's really just going to their monthly meetings and making sure that the committee, this committee can be updated on anything going on with Amherst Media as well as sharing the perspective of the Amherst School Committee as needed.
The Budget Coordinating Group?
Sure, Budget Coordinating Group. So the Budget Coordinating Group for the Town of Amherst is a group that meets typically in the winter, to the point that Ms. Spitzer raised. And some years it meets less frequently than three or four times, some years it meets more frequently, depends on the year. This year was about typical. And so the BCG, when they meet, they get reports from all the different committees and staff members from the group. So for instance, I will attend, the library director attends, the town manager attends, sometimes some other staff members, depending what the needs are. And then members of the select board, the library board of trustees and the school committee attend. And it's trying to coordinate how things are going, what the financial picture is. And there are some years where one particular area of town government has needs. So typically, it's been more evenly distributed. And then there's been times where there's been unexpected variables. And so the idea of the creation of the Budget Coordinating Group is to have a group that functions to be able to work out those things, to share information and to let all the committees know where the other committees are and where the staff as well. So it's not a decision-making body, it's not a group that discusses and coordinates, but it's not like taking the place of a legislative body, doesn't make decisions outside the lens of the school committee. The school committee member would be coming back to report on BCG meetings. Typically in the morning, again, the first one's usually when we get financial projections, so late fall, early winter, and then it meets a couple more times once the projections get a little more clear, when the governor's budget comes out in late January, early February. And hopefully not again in March, but sometimes it's needed. Okay, is it okay? Yeah.
Please, go ahead.
Joint capital planning, so this is similar to BCG, except it formally makes recommendations, that's what makes it a little different. So this is solely for the capital part of the town budget. It doesn't influence the operations of the town budget, which the Budget Coordinating Group is mostly focused on operations. The joint capital planning, in the past, has made recommendations. It takes all the capital projects that are proposed in the different departments of the town, tries to prioritize which ones can get funded within the town's limits. It tries to also set priorities that are forward-looking. So Mr. McPherson will do multi-year projections for the joint capital planning so that that group, JCPC, knows what's on the horizon for the schools, certainly a big topic this year. So it's a give-and-take between this committee's staff and then the larger town body before it gets to a legislative aspect. CPAC, so CPAC.
Sorry, is that, um...
I'm sorry.
Is that one also about in the winter?
Also, yeah, it's a very similar timeline to the Budget Coordinating Group. I want to put the caveat on that with the change in the Amherst town government, I don't have a great sense of how that'll influence the timing of these groups. The groups, so that's the thing, I can't, I don't know how that works. But the groups are really about elected officials in, you know, select board, school committee, library board of trustees and staff. So I think the same, my guess is the same vehicles will apply. The timeline perhaps might be different, particularly as we make, the town makes a transition.
And is it also mornings?
Typically it is, yeah. Typically, those, both those groups in the past have met at 8:30 or 9 o'clock in the morning, usually somewhere on the town side, not the school side, in terms of physical location. CPAC, so CPAC is our Special Ed Parent Advisory Council. And they have meetings that, one Friday morning per month, and they alternate locations within our schools. Nancy Stewart is the current and has been the current president or chair of CPAC. And it really connects the work and the thoughts of that particular community of families back to the school committee. I think it's, we've an incredibly positive working relationship with CPAC. And part of that is because the school committee has been an active partner and multiple people, because it's not just, I mean, I know Peter, you're doing it now, and I think others are. But it's been, over the last couple of years, different school committee members have really given a lot of focus and attention to hearing the concerns in that area and work collaboratively with Nancy and other CPAC parents to make sure we're working together. And so that's a critically important one as well. I think I'll speak about professional leave and then maybe, if you want to speak to MASC. So professional leave, so each year, we have the opportunity, we offer the opportunity by contract for staff members to request a sabbatical. And the way that works is they request it, the superintendent meets with the person who's requested it, and then it comes back to the professional leave requests. Subcommittee is typically, in the past, been the chair of the relevant committee that's played that role to then make a recommendation to the larger committee. So that's around sabbaticals. And I'll leave it for Ms. Erdonis to talk about MASC.
Sure. So the MASC is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And I actually thought that this, I don't know if the Amherst School Committee has an actual delegate to the MASC. I thought it was just the region.
I thought it was both, but I...
Yeah. It might, it's good to check just to see if we, because I think we've only ever been sending one person. And that's probably fine. But in any case, the role of a school committee member is primarily as a voting delegate to the MASC. So they have this annual convention and the delegates come and vote on a whole series of different issues, including policy issues that they want to take a stand on. And then also there, you know, the various officers for the association. But then there's also the option to attend workshops. And last year I attended, it's over three days or so in Hyannis typically. I don't think they've ever had it in any other location, but it's out in the Cape. You know, lovely location. The conference itself is quite informational and, you know, a lot of really good resources that are there. So I found it extremely valuable. I brought back some good, you know, some good thoughts anyway for things that we could be doing. So, you know, it does, it does require an overnight stay, so there's that commitment to it. But, you know, you get food too. Mr. Dumbling?
Just a little side note there, there's, some of you may have gotten an email. There's kind of a mini version of this workshop, it's the MASC Summer Institute. It's like one day, I think it's in Marlboro-ish? Where it's like a morning or a half day or day of workshops. Like they focus on different things, like if you're exploring early start times, what the experience of the district's been and things of that nature. So another little opportunity to connect.
Yeah, that's a little different than the delegate thing.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. You're right, the MASC offers a lot of different workshops throughout the year. And they have, you know, the charting the course, which is sort of required training for school committee members and all of that. So any thoughts, questions about the descriptions for the different subcommittees? No?
I just wanted, I looked on...
I just wanted, I looked down at MASC. It does say that a school committee can have a vote at the meeting if they are active members of MASC in compliance with annual due regulations.
Both committees?
I believe so. It may be that the committees have chosen to send this one.
Thank you. That's helpful. Um, okay, so anything popping out at people? Mr. Dumling?
Um, so yeah, I'd love to continue as, uh, a CPAC, um, so there's also, Region also has a CPAC rep. Plus CPAC welcomes any school committee member anytime. So it's not unusual if there would be two or more at a meeting. So that, that would be cool. Um, there's a couple of things on, that aren't here that I project, are going to take up quite a bit of my time in the coming year. Particularly the fall. One is Chair of the Regional School District Planning Board, um, looking at regionalization of our district with, with Pelham. Um, if our schedule goes how we are currently thinking it will go, it's still kind of in draft evolving form. Um, we want the fall to be a pretty high public engagement period, um, so a lot of attending events and reaching out and so. Um, that's going to be a big time sink. Um, and, and the other is, so we don't have technically an advocacy committee. Um, which comes up kind of in two areas. One, um, we're just finishing up on the state budget. Uh, but the, the other is, you know, if, if, uh, certain local charter school decides to expand yet again, um, to the objections of the commissioner and the Board of Education. And all data and reason, that's going to require, um, yet another, uh, effort and, um, that's, that's not an, an, un. It's not a non-zero time commitment. Um, so I'm just trying to balance my, uh, what, what else other than CPAC I would sort of officially sign up for. JCPC has some wonky interest for me, but I'm, I'm totally fine with if somebody else wants to do that.
Okay, so which ones do you think you would be signing up for besides CPAC? Are there any others that you think?
A, AEF, um, I mean, I, I love the work that AEF does. I don't know if they have a total need for a rep. I'm happy to be like the official AEF rep or reach out to them and say, you know, in, in years past, has there been any positive benefit to that relationship? Or, or is it just good for you to know that you have someone you can like immediately talk to? So yeah, I guess, I guess I'd like to see what else other people would like to and then. Always willing to help fill in the gaps.
Any other thoughts or, um, particular committees?
So I guess the, the challenge for me is, um, as you all are aware, but others may not be, is that I'm expecting in November. So I, if that were not the case, I would, like my interests and my skills totally aligned with the Budget Coordinating Group, the Joint Capital Planning Committee. And I would like to be, um, and given the uncertainty about the timing of that, um. You know, I, I, I'd be willing to serve on those, but, um, I just want to put it out there that there is, uh. Depending on the timing of these things, there's a high potential I will be indisposed. You know, not, not able to be there as much as, as we may want a representative to be there. So I don't know if there's a way to work around that, kind of. Sign me up and then with the caveat that if somebody, you know, if, if things change with the timing, you know, that, or if they. Anyways, a- as needed, we could move it around. Um, I'd also be interested in the Amherst Education Foundation Audit Committee. I'd be happy to do the professional leave request to subcommittee.
Well, you know, there, there are two slots for the Budget Coordinating Group, so, um, that could potentially be a spot, you know, that you could fill one and then have the other person.
Exactly, depending on people's interest. I just didn't want to sign up for it and not be completely open about the. Potential for me not being able to attend some of the meetings.
Yeah, so the other thing I was going to say is, right, there's somewhat nodes in the transition, but I think, um. Those meetings wouldn't happen any earlier in the change of government. They would either stay similar timing or perhaps, I, and I want to predict it, but you know, one could. See a scenario by which they move later, but there wouldn't be, uh, I can't see a scenario where they get pushed sooner as opposed to later. Changeover and the number of things that are going to be changing. And, um, different timelines that are possible.
I would be interested in the Joint Capital Planning Committee. And then, um, fill in wherever else, um. It, it is a challenge for me to, um, to be way too many mornings. So if like the Budget Coordinating Group and JCPC are both mornings. And happening at the same time of year, that would be a challenge for my schedule. So I'll go with one of those. Um, the, um, CPAC is interesting to me, but if, if the take-all comers, I'll. I'll just be the, the hanger-on, um, and, yeah, where I'd, I'd be happy to fill in any of the others.
Okay, great. Okay, so I, you know, I, I'm happy to fill in wherever and I think the chair typically can fill in, um, almost anywhere. Um, I would say that, you know, I'm, I'm happy to do. I'm happy to fill in for the, uh, AEF, um. Basically just fill in the gaps for folks I didn't hear before. And also, you know, I don't know where Mr. Nakajima is going to land on some of these. So, um, maybe what we can do is if, if there are, if, if we can do one more round and just people say this is what I definitely want to do. Let's just at least tackle those, right? And Debbie can write those down. Um, and then we can share back the, uh, the list. Chart with the names of, of people who have decided and then if there's any additional ones that you, you know, you say I want to do this, we can, we can bring it back. Does that make sense? Ms. Westmoreland, would that be? So starting with Mr. Dumling again, let's just go back around. Not to put you in a spot, I'm sorry.
Right, uh, okay, CPAC, AEF.
I didn't hear anybody else say Budget Coordinating Group, so you can put me back to that one. And I, I guess the Joint Capital.
Um, Joint Capital? Definitely, um. Do you want more than one? Cause I don't, I don't have a passion beyond that. I, I'm.
If you can do one, more than one, that'd be great.
I have that Audit Committee.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, and so I will, um, I'll do the MASC again, um, I think that, you know, sort of works. And. I'll, uh, I'll take the collaborative.
It was the dinner, right?
That's what swung me over, yes. Um, anyone for the Professional Leave Request Subcommittee? It's just one meeting. Right, once a year?
My enthusiastic eye.
Excellent, okay. So Debbie, if you don't mind, if you don't consent to this back around, it sounds like we've got pretty much everybody at this point.
I just wanted to check. I'm not sure why I have you typed in on Amherst.
I was wondering that too. Um, well, I'm, I'm happy to continue on that, um, it's funny because it's, I, my name keeps popping up for this one before. It's just. Yeah, so former school committee member was on there before, um, and it's still listed on their website actually, but I, I'll, I'll take that one over. That's fine. Great, all right. Thank you very much. Any other thoughts or comments from the subcommittees? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. All right, so, um.
Given that a couple of members of the public have raised the tornado warning in order to, uh, come to our meeting, um, I'm wondering if we, we. It might be advisable to informally gauge at the public to see if we, uh, maybe want to open up public comment again. If, just in case, that was the reason why the public went through the storm to be here with us today.
I'm here to talk about East Street School.
Any other members of the, no, okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Dumling, yeah. Okay, uh, next order of business is the Superintendent's Updates. We're back to our regular agenda.
And I'll be quite brief, um, there's one minute left for the tornado warning for anyone who's paying attention, so. People did literally drive through it. The first one ended and the second one started, so. Um, so I'll be brief, um, just to share about end of year events that are going on. I did a pretty lengthy, uh, update at the last region meeting. So, um, that had included some district-wide work. So tomorrow morning at nine thirty is Crocker Farms Moving Up Ceremony for their sixth graders. Uh, all these events are certainly open to any school committee member who has the time and, and can make it. And, um. Wednesday morning, nine o'clock for Wildwood. I'm looking at Mr. Yaffe, nine o'clock for Wildwood, okay? And one o'clock for Fort River, um, in the afternoon. Those are the, the three ceremonies coming up. I think, uh, one of the, two other things I want to note very briefly is that, um, Wednesday afternoon at five fifteen at Wildwood, there's a ribbon coming. From mural project that's happening at Wildwood. We, during intermission earlier, we saw the incredible. Hmm, uh, Cambodian mural that was done in the hallway here and there's some work that's been going, has been happening at Wildwood and. Ms. Julie Rivera's led that and she's retiring. Um, this is, that will be her second-to-last day, at the end of her second-to-last day in the district. Um, and that, um. I also wanted to acknowledge I did it at Region, but I want to do it at Amherst as well, that, uh, we can, we could go, actually we could go tonight. We had a employee recognition event, so it had recognized both the clerical media award winners that were voted at the last joint meeting. Uh, members who were fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years of service and the fives, as well as our retirees. I want to thank Ms. Westmoreland for organizing it and, um, a couple of school committee members, uh, were able to come. It was just, it was a wonderful event and to recognize the literally hundreds of years of collective experience that we're losing at the end of the year. And I want to just publicly acknowledge that we, we're indebted to our educators, um. And, and not educators who I would consider educators. They don't, they don't technically involve the education of children and yet they're keeping our, uh, driving our children to school every day. They're keeping our schools safe, um, and, uh, in all sorts of ways. So it was just a wonderful event and I just want to acknowledge the great work our staff do, um, and it's always a bittersweet event. Cause we're both really excited to celebrate people moving on to the next phase of their lives and really recognizing the loss and the challenge that we'll have. As people move on, um, and so I just wanted to say that out loud in both committees, because I think it was, it was worth sharing and I want to also think. Westmoreland, you know, unfairly I get a lot of credit for the event because it's a lovely event and like most things, all the good things that come from the district somehow are connected to. Westmoreland's ingenuity, uh, and hard work and perseverance and dealing with me. So, um, it, it was really nice and I know the principals, Mr. Yaffe was able to be there. A number of retirees from Wildwood School, um, it was nice to have the principals there as well. So I just want to say that out loud.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Morris? Mr. Dumling?
Um, so Dr. Morris, so you, you know, we had a second, um, uh, community member this year talk, uh. Raised some concerns about the signage for our, our meetings. This is kind of an issue for the chair as well of the committee, but just because it was raised to, to you, um, basically the notion is people know that the. Meetings happen at the, at the high school, but, um, often not much more than that. So even though we've updated the postings to say side library entrance. Often times people say the high school, not everybody knows the high school. It's a large place. So the first time you come here, you go to the front door. Sometimes it's locked, sometimes it's open, but then you don't know where to go to get, so, um, there are some, uh, logistical issues here that we've talked about before about. Locked doors locking and what the procedure would be and responsibility, but given that we're coming at the end of this, this year. Um, I don't know if this is something that we can maybe brainstorm over the summer to come up with a better solution for the fall, because making people aware of the meetings is certainly a priority.
Kind of for a brief response. I'm meeting with Mr. Jackson tomorrow afternoon to try to think through, Mr. Jackson being the high school principal, this being the high school building. Uh, thinking about what signage might make sense moving forward. So I'll, we'll report soon.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other questions or comments for Dr. Morris. Um, thank you so much for that. So moving on to the next item on the agenda, uh, which is the elementary administrative model. So this item was not on the original agenda, uh, posted, uh, online early last week. Um, but following an article that appeared in the Amherst Bulletin, uh, regarding changes to the assistant principal positions in the elementary schools this upcoming summer. Um, I thought it would be a good idea to make sure that this was a, you know, transparent process and that, um, also invites public comment. So I, I asked, uh, Dr. Morris to add this to the agenda. Um, so our attorney reviewed the question and agreed that having it on the agenda tonight, uh, for those reasons made a lot of sense, um, and it wasn't a violation of open meeting law. So that's, you know, just something I want to say publicly so everyone's aware, um, and that's why we're proceeding with it. So, um, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Morris, uh, to maybe introduce this topic if you don't mind.
Sure, can I add one other thing about the posting? Is that, um, it was reposted with this topic prior to tonight's meeting.
It's the agenda that's in front of us right now.
Right, and it was posted online. It wasn't within forty-eight hours, but it, once Ms. Adonis got in touch with me and I was in touch with, um. The attorney and he cleared it, I think it was Friday midday. It was reposted with the topic, so, um, if people weren't looking, they did see it then. Yeah, so, um, at the joint meeting last week, we spoke about this in, in, in some detail, but I think, uh, to Ms. Adonis's point, I want to put more detail. Particularly as, uh, relates to, um, the reporting of that item. And so I think the three critical pieces I want to recount, one is that no decisions have been made, right? So this is something that, about the assistant principals or leadership model at the elementary schools, yeah, to date. This is something that the elementary principals are considering, um, once school gets out, they're going to have more conversations with myself, Ms. Cunningham. And the goal is the same, is what's the leadership model in the schools that supports students and faculty to have a successful school? I think, uh, a number of variables have kind of played out where, um, it opened up our opportunity to think a little differently about this. At our elementary schools and, uh, the thing that we want to acknowledge, and I know what Mr. Shea intended from his comments last week, as he shared with me. Was that there needs to be another leadership position, that our schools are incredibly too complex for there to be one principal and no other leadership positions. The variable that we're trying to play out is, is having an assistant principal the best model for that. Or there are other ways to think about it. Some districts, and I, I cited some examples last week, some districts utilize staff, um, or education team leaders. To take on some of the special education components and teacher leader positions to do more of the curriculum components. And this plays out actually at the secondary level quite a bit, because department heads have released time and they are truly the leaders of the curriculum in their content areas. So what we're doing now is, is really the consideration phase, not the decision-making phase, uh, which gets me to the, my third point, which is. Uh, at the point at which the principals make their decisions, um, and I think it's, it's a key, I'm using my words intentionally, that the principals make their decisions. Because they set staffing in their buildings. Uh, they will inform the community of what vacancy is posted, if any. Um, and have an open process to select the best candidate, um, in an op- in a completely open, non-internal way. For whatever the position is that, um, they have. In other words, this isn't a person-specific, this is a, what is the structure that's going to support the schools? Uh, and we have an opportunity to think about this a little differently, um, based on circumstance. But that's sort of where we are in our thinking. I know we're all looking, uh, forward to the last three days of school, because we love ending the school year well with students. And the reality is the summer gives us a little more space as administrators to be able to really think through all the variables. Uh, we don't want it to be a rushed decision. We want to really, um. Focus on what's the administrative structure, what's the leadership structure and what's the relationship between those two things. Uh, cause the person whose role will change the most based on the structure is actually the principal. Frankly, it's not me, it's not Ms., not myself, it's not Ms. Cunningham. So that's what the variables they have to weigh are if, um. If they go Plan A, what does that mean for what the principal's day-to-day job is and what they can do and what other people can do? If they go to Plan B, how does that work for them? And then what's the best plan to support again the students and the teachers? Uh, and staff members in the school. And that's what they're in the process of weighing and will weigh a little more heavily as, uh, students and staff depart in a couple of days. So I know that's a broad summary, but I think.
That's very helpful. I have some questions and thoughts as well, but, um, I'll just turn over to the committee, see if there's anything that, Mr. Dumling?
So, uh, so thank you for the update. Uh, so two questions that came to mind are, um, i- is it possible that once all this shakes out? That the structure might be different at the various elementary schools? Is there that kind of possibility, flexibility, uh, for sort of self-determination within the building? And then the other thing I, I guess I'm wondering is, is how much, um, budgetary pressures factor into this? I know sometimes at the region, um, we, we would have liked to have a, a different, uh, leadership structure, structure in some of the buildings. But it's just not cut, was just not cost prohibitive during those years. Um, this came up a couple of times on, uh, school governance councils and such. So just, uh, thoughts on that, because obviously as we just saw this past year, the budget is not necessarily easy to predict. So you could do all this wonderful thinking about what the best leadership structure is and then all of a sudden not have the resources to support it. So just your thoughts on that.
Yeah, so I'll start with the second one. Um, so the budgetary pressures, all the models that we've had discussions with are, are relatively cost-neutral. In the, in the overall scheme of things, so that's not a large factor, um. To be more explicit about it, if you went to a model where there was more teacher leadership and, and less administrative, you know, pieces. Um, you'd need to backfill that with some funds for education team leaders to run special education meetings. So it, it essentially ends up being a wash one way or the other. Um, so your first question, is it possible to be different models at different elementary schools? It is. And as I said, this is a principal decision. And the reality is our three elementary schools aren't identical right now in terms of student population, staff population, uh, et cetera. You know, as, as we've talked about before, you have one of our schools having, uh, significantly higher percentage of special education students in it. And so the result of that is have significantly higher percentage of special education meetings in it. Um, in addition to any of the student needs and, and, and that. So I think we want to be flexible to a point with. So I think we want to be flexible to a point with having principals work with the needs of their building. I don't think there'll be, I think the variables that we have and the models we have, like the options are pretty static between the two. But I could imagine a scenario where the needs of the buildings are such where we work on different model. The principals end up going with different models and I'm comfortable as long as there's a clear rationale as to why the model works for the building that they're in. Another variable, for instance, in my head is just, we'll have buildings that we, I know because I meet all these people at this time of year, we're hiring a number of new staff members for. And there's other buildings, just based on who retired and who ended up deciding to move to some other location, where there's almost no new staff members in them. And that's not a good or bad thing, but that's a reality that's going to affect what's needed in that building. Because new teachers, as wonderful as the individuals I'm meeting are, they're going to be either, if they're either new or new to Amherst, they're going to need more ongoing kind of acclamation and induction than a staff that is veteran staff that doesn't have that. Again, it's not better or worse, but I think for me, it's understanding what are the variables in the buildings and how are principals? What's their thought process of coming to a decision? And that's the way I view that aspect.
Mr. Demling?
And then Ms. Spitzer. So I just had a question about timing.
Yeah.
So the, the thinking and brainstorming and consideration process will begin after Friday. When, depending on what the decision is made in terms of what that structure looks like, when do you anticipate that that might be implemented? And what are the implications for the upcoming school year?
Yeah, so I think we want to make our decisions by mid-July. I mean, I think just based on vacation schedules, giving people some downtime. That gives enough time for people to do the thought process and for them to meet with me, Ms. Cunningham and each other frankly. And not too much time where when we post, it's way too close to the beginning of the school year, typically we post for two weeks for a vacancy. So it means if we make our decisions, if the principals make their decisions by mid-July, that means they're interviewing either last week in July, first week in August and, and gives two, three weeks for anyone who's on boarded to get acclimated and hired and paperwork to go through and fingerprinting if they don't have that done with us, which is a state law. And get everyone ready for the school year.
So I'm assuming some of these changes in the leadership structure could, hopefully they'll be positive and we'll want to continue them going forward. So I'm guessing, curious about the extent to which changes we're thinking about in terms of moving towards like a bilingual program at Fort River? How much, given that it's not, you know, it's not a done deal that it's going to happen. But it would be great to have somebody with a bilingual education program background joining the team. So, and, and I'm sure, you know, and we're even less far along at Wildwood and Crocker Farm and thinking about if we're going to do program-based teaching at the school. So I guess to what extent, if at all, we're going to be able to think about sort of these moving targets in terms of the changes that are coming out of the enrollment working groups work as we do this hiring?
Yeah, so what Ms. Hardy, Phil's Hardy, who you met from MABE, she feels like the number one important thing in a building. The bilingual piece is a great, but the biggest, the most significant thing for her in terms of leadership structure is having someone who understands language development. Which is not the same thing as being bilingual. And so she definitely is a high advocate of having bilingual staff in buildings. But she could say, you know, what she's told me is you can have a bilingual staff member who doesn't truly understand language development because those are two really different things. In some ways, it actually reminds me of Ms. Ordona's comment of, just because someone's bilingual doesn't mean they can teach bilingly. And so she said that is, the number one and number two is actually the level of organization the person has. Because to transition a school that's not a dual-language school to a dual-language school, and I, I know that you said rightfully that we haven't made that decision, but just I want to answer your question directly. Takes a tremendous amount of organization and staff development. Because whether you're teaching English and you're a multilingual English speaker, you're teaching in Spanish, the level of detail of organization to make that whole system work is incredibly high. I do think for the other two schools, which I'll get to when the topic is, is updated, we won't have a tremendous amount done. But I do think that the, one of the key functions is someone who's collaborative and who's dedicated to working with different stakeholders, knowing that we're going to have a process that engages families, engages staff in setting a vision moving forward. And, you know, so I think that's true for both the other buildings as well. And I'll get a little more detail perhaps when that's on the agenda, if that's okay.
Okay, so I, actually, I'm not going to repeat some of the questions that have already been said. I'm glad they were asked. I guess I'm, I'm just wondering if you can clarify for all of us. There was a question that had been asked previously about whether assistant principals were required in each of the schools. And because that's the model that we have been using and we've had discussions at the regional committee level. But if, you know, if you can just share that again for this level, in case there's different audiences, I think that would be helpful. And might also spark some additional questions from folks.
Absolutely, thank you. I'm sorry I omitted that. So there is no legal or technical requirement to have assistant principals at the elementary level. What you do need to have is a a structure when leaders are out of a building that has a sequence of leadership. So for, and that's not the right phrase and I'm forgetting it for the moment, which I apologize for. So for instance, like in Pelham, it's very clear, I, I'm using that example, I know it's not an Amherst school committee, but it's an elementary school that I supervise that has one administrator in it. So when Mr. Dejarle, who's the principal there, is out of the building, there's a very clear chain of command, that's the word, phrase I was looking for. Chain of command of who, who the next person is, and it's clear and it's posted. And so that is something that schools with one administrator have. But it's frankly something that all of our schools have already because there's, there are meetings where Mr. Shea and Ms. Conklin are both out of the meeting, of the building, for instance, at Crocker Farm, or one of them is out sick and the other one has to leave the building for a meeting elsewhere. Whereas in an IP meeting, can't be interrupted unless it's an emergency. So these are normal things that we have in place. It certainly has a different level of importance if there's one person who wears administrative role as opposed to two in our buildings. There's many schools, districts, similar sized schools, Long Meadow's a bit larger, but Long Meadow, North Hampton, they have one administrator in their elementary school buildings and they have a really clear chain of command of what happens when that person's out, for whatever reason. It could be out at a meeting, it could be out sick, it could be a whole host of things, out at a conference. And so that's our focus, is being crystal clear on what's the chain of command if the main administrator is out. The other piece that I'll mention, and this is, it goes to a sort of negative place, but I think it's worth mentioning, is we have to do that often for our safety planning in terms of who the incident commander is anyway. Right? So the police training that we've had over the last five, 10 years have always suggested, and not just suggested, demanded, that we are really clear on who, what's the sequence and what's the order? Because in a truly crisis situation that happens frankly all too often in our country, we can't rely on the person who's officially the incident commander, who is the walkie-talkie with like the one next to it on their, under their title, that that person's going to be accessible or available to respond in an emergency. And that's why we have a team approach. And the same way it sort of happens in this, this approach as well. So there are, by no means am I saying there are other, we're the only district with elementary assistant principals. Certainly West Springfield, South Alley, there are other districts that opt to have multiple assistant principals. And it's, what's the right model for the needs of the school and the students? And I don't think there's one right method for all. Actually, I don't believe there's a right method for all. I think it's trying to pick the right method for the time and place, the school and what the school needs are. But there's, there's not a mandate at a DDC level to have that.
So I guess the only other comment that I would make is recognizing, we have heard for quite some time now, you know, from members of the community who build very strong relationships, right, with our assistant principals and with, you know, all of our educators and administrators. Schools are beloved places, you know, and, and families spend a lot of time there. Their children sort of moving through, you know, kindergarten all the way through sixth grade. Not all of them, of course, but many of them. And so I just wanted, you know, kind of put a finer point on the importance of communicating back with those families to make sure that they understand the changes that are about to take place once these decisions have been made. And that those communications actually happen, you know, from the administrators, right? And probably also from you, Dr. Morris, as, you know, as the chief here. But that people hear from, you know, from the principals themselves. Because I think that that is also incredibly important, is that, you know, people understand there's still someone that they've recognized that is at the helm in these buildings and that it's not just this big changeover that's taking place. I think a lot of times we forget here in the school committee and just even at the district office level perhaps, you know, that, that people aren't necessarily paying as close attention to some of these things as we are, right? And so this will come as news, you know, and, and not necessarily great news. I think when people hear that something is changing, that that can send them into a state of panic. So I just want to advocate on behalf of community members who have formed those really deep relationships and who care a lot about our administrators, you know, that we let them know well in advance before school starts, once decisions have been made. And that it be, you know, communication that comes directly from principals and letting them know that, you know, that, what to expect, how things are changing, how things are not changing also, because I think that's also important for them to understand. And if there is a difference in chain of command, that it be clearly articulated so that they are aware of that too. In as many different forms as we possibly can.
Do you mind if I comment on that? Yeah, so I think that's spot on and I'll be frank that I've heard significant levels of feedback as even just the communication that have happened, has happened at, at some of the schools about people not necessarily either coming back or being unclear they're coming back in, or in a different capacity. And if, I think, having been an elementary principal, assistant principal and principal, I feel like internally, I'm acutely aware of the importance that those roles play in the lives of our students. But if I wasn't, I was certainly reminded of it for the levels of feedback, which I think is a testament to the folks we have right now and then the educators that we have in leadership roles in the district currently, that it wasn't met casually or indifferently. It was quite the opposite with level, high levels of concern and interest in how things will play out for these individuals.
Okay. Any other comments on this topic? Okay. Great. All right, so moving on to the next topic on the agenda, we have the East Street School Building Discussion. And I just want to clarify for the committee that the agenda says that this is a topic for a vote. And there's also a draft motion on the agenda. But as we've discussed previously, we're not going to vote on an item that hasn't been properly introduced and discussed by the committee and that we haven't really had time to think about and research. I've already spoken with Dr. Morris about this. So I do believe Mr. Zomack is here from the town to present to the committee on this topic. And we can discuss it tonight, but we're going to wait to bring it back to the committee at a later time so that we can vote on, on this topic. So Dr. Morris, do you want to say anything else about this topic before inviting Mr. Zomack up?
I'll do a very brief introduction and then, then I'll turn it over to Assistant Town Manager. So it starts from a personal place. I did my student teaching at East Street School. So the connection to the school committee, this is two thousand, something like that, two thousand one. So the connection to the district was at one point, Fort River School was overcrowded. And there were more classrooms than could fit on the campus. East Street School is located, just visually, for those who don't know, it's, it's directly across the street. Now, it's a busy street, but directly across the street from Fort River School. So there were four classrooms that were located there. Generally, it was fourth grade classrooms and some years it varied between third and fifth grade. And there was kindergarten there a couple of years, if you can believe it. And so students walked across the street for lunch and they organized specials in the way where they weren't walking across all the time. But it was certainly complicated and not ideal. That being said, it's, you know, these buildings that has old character, which was lovely and raised challenges in terms of heating, cooling, you know, and I'm not speaking for the current conditions. I'm really speaking to two thousand one, winter and spring of two thousand one. And so over time, as the Fort River population declined, it was not needed anymore. And so it has not been in, and Mr. Zomack may have the, the year, but it has not been used by the school committee or by the school district in a great many years. After it was used by Fort River, there was a time period where it was used as one of the alternative sites for the high school. So if you think of what Summit Academy is now, it used to be separated into East Street and Southeast Campus. And so the region was using it for a couple of years. Over time, they recognized the value in combining those two campuses and building capacity of having more staff and more students connected. And so that was the last time it was used by the schools. I'm conscious word at Amherst School Committee meeting was by the regional school district. But again, that was, it was quite a while ago and it's, it was a very successful transition to move students to one campus, which as you know, is moving to a new campus for next year. And so one of the things that town has been working on, Mr. Zomack, hopefully I'm doing this well in terms of segueing, is when we have either vacant parcels of land or vacant buildings or both, that's town-owned and not being used by the schools, how do we approach that and what are the next steps? And so is that a fair introduction? Yeah, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much for having me. I am Dave Zomack. I'm the Assistant Town Manager, work on a number of special projects for the town. If I could, I just have a very brief handout. I just wanted to give you with some photos, just to remind everybody.
Thank you.
I'm joined to my right by John Hornick, who is the Chair of the Amherst Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. If by chance you have questions about the trust, because I am going to mention the trust as part of the plan for East Street School. I'm sure Mr. Hornick would be happy to answer those questions. And I thank Dr. Morris for that introduction, which kind of brings us to today. And you may be wondering, why are we here? Why is the town here? Because essentially, the town took ownership, took care, custody and control of the building a number of years ago. We have spent considerable amounts of money, we fixed the roof. You may recall a plan that the town had to move the LSSE department to the school after the schools stopped using the building. Instead, this goes back to when John Mazzanti was the town manager. Instead, we decided to move LSSE to the middle school, which worked out extremely well. So the building has been vacant, as Dr. Morris said. And in fact, some people really have said, well, why do we need to come back to the school committee, to the Amherst School Committee at all? Well, in fact, as we looked at the title for the school, it became clear that some of these old school buildings, it's not really, it's hard to follow the title from many, many years ago, a hundred years ago or more, to figure out who has all the control of such a building and a piece of land. As Dr. Morris said, this is a building and about 2.4 acres of land, which has an old recreation field behind it. And so in essence, our town council has advised us to come to you. And in order to make sure that the, the history and the title and the care, custody and control is clear, that you, we are asking you to at some point in the future, at one of your future meetings, to take a vote to basically turn over officially the care, custody and control to the town of Amherst. Now, at annual town meeting, Article 27 of the annual town meeting, I'm not sure if you all followed who, which members are our town meeting members or not. But Article 27 spoke to the town's interest in turning over some of the future development of the site to the Amherst Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. So they can explore either putting affordable housing in the existing building or on some part, or all of the rest of the 2.4 acres. So that's really what brings us to you tonight for our first discussion. We wanted to give you a sense of why we're here. Again, there are many people who might look at this and say, but the schools, you know, we have been covering all the costs, the carrying costs of heating, cooling. We put in over a hundred thousand dollars in a new roof and some window improvements. So this goes back a number of years that the schools have not been using it. But we need the vote from you to essentially approve that clear title and that process has been followed. Our town council said we could have the Article 27 be considered by town meeting. It did pass and we could come to you after. We didn't need to do that vote before we came to town meeting. So that's what brings us here tonight. I would suggest, if I might, that when you are ready, the Summit Academy may, will need to follow a very similar path. And I would look to Dr. Morris and, and the committee as to when that is the right time to do that. But right now, it's East Street School. And so I think I'll stop there. If you have questions for Mr. Hornick or myself, we're happy to answer them. I'm just going to shut off my phone. I'm sorry, I'm getting weather.
I think we're all in the same boat at this, yeah.
We had some trees down and some power lines in South Amherst, so people are telling me about those and I'm going to call.
So I'm wondering if, if Mr. Hornick has anything that he wants to say? Because I was actually at the town meeting when you addressed town meeting regarding this article and, yeah.
I don't know if I have a lot of additional information. The one, two things I'll say is the trust is currently doing its due diligence with respect to the property. And one of the things we found, if you think about the property being two lots, the front lot, which has the school building on it and some additional property, and then the back lot, which has been informally used as a recreation field for a long time. Turns out, you can't build on the back lot. That is all wetlands. So that is confirmed, there's no question about that. So if we can use any part of the school, it would be the front lot. As Mr. Zomack said, it's possible we could reuse the building. Having been it, to be honest, I wouldn't be optimistic. But we are hiring an architectural firm to do a careful review of that building, as well as the larger site. And we'll have their findings after we go to contract, hopefully in the very near future, within a couple of months or so. So we'll be able to know exactly what we can do with the property. If it turns out that we can't do anything with the property, at least with respect to affordable housing, what happens is it goes back to the town. So then it becomes incumbent on the town to figure out what to do with this property that- that is frankly very hard to figure out what to do with. So I'll stop there and just give people an opportunity to ask questions that I might be able to answer or Mr. Zomack could answer.
So I'll turn it over to the committee unless Dr. Morris has anything else that you want to say before, okay. So if the committee has any questions or statements you'd like to make, Mr. Demling?
Yeah, short question for Dr. Morris and then short question for either Mr. Zomack or Mr. Hornick. So Dr. Morris, if I recall correctly, this site was evaluated as a required part of the MSBA process during our previous elementary building projects, which if I'm stating this correctly, requires you to evaluate all other potential sites for new buildings and and it was determined that it was not a potentially used for an elementary school of our needs, is that correct?
Yeah, the reason it got disqualified right away is just wasn't enough acres to build a reasonable sized elementary school, so. Mr. Zomack was on the building committee, I think he was actually close to that conversation. And that's how I, I'm just looking at you to make sure I'm recalling that correctly.
Yes, absolutely. If you look at the map, it's an oddly configured lot and no one today probably knows why. It's such a strange lot, but 2.4 acres is just tiny for a school site.
You have a second question?
Yeah, and then just a brief question for Mr. Hornick and Mr. Zomack. So for us, the timing of our motion, we're at the end of our school year schedule, so actually I don't think we happen on the meeting scheduled until
We do not. This will come back, yeah.
However, we do have a regional meeting on the 26th. So I'm just, I don't know what the current thinking is in terms of how fast you want to move on whatever you're exploring, or if this is holding you up for different projects, or whether it would be valuable to you to have a vote on this in the late June timeframe as opposed to late August timeframe, or whether it doesn't matter to you?
If there was a meeting in late June, we would certainly be happy to attend and make any kind of additional presentation. We would, so sooner is better, but it's not essential. I did just want to point out the wording on the proposed motion was developed by our attorney a couple of minutes page. And I think it's important to point out held for school, I'm just quoting from it, held for school purposes is no longer needed by the town for such purposes. And that's the key, is the school committee, Amherst School Committee, basically saying it's not needed anymore, it hasn't been used for a number of years. The town broadly has now put in well over a hundred thousand dollars to maintain the building with utilities and winter, winter costs, as well as a new roof. And we want to have that officially, that control be with the select board, so that the select board can then follow the direction of town meeting and give the municipal affordable housing trust the opportunity to explore feasibility.
So just to jump in, I, from what I understand though, there is no rush for us to make a decision right now, and so so we can actually bring this back at a later time, so we do not have to bring this. And from what I understand, not to talk about the region at Amherst School Committee meeting, but the regional school committee agenda is already pretty packed. And so I think the idea is we could bring this back in the start of the new year. And that way, the committee has a chance to think about this and, you know, and discuss it and get some additional, additional input. And then, you know, maybe we could invite Mr. Zomack and Mr. Hornick back to have more discussions. Are there any other comments or questions, Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Yeah, so I, I was at an event a little while ago and a member of the community came up to me and said, I want to talk to you about this site. And the reason she wanted to was she was concerned that if we ended up going forward with a school building project at Fort River, that we would be in need, you know, renovating that building. And these are all big ifs, but that potentially this could be a site where we could use it for swing space. So I just wanted to check that because it seemed to be something that she believed, and her request was that, you know, she liked the idea of moving forward with affordable housing at the site, but was concerned that if we did it too soon, we'd lose the opportunity to use this space for swing space. So I just wanted to put that out there as something that I heard of the community and just get some feedback from the two of you on that, or the superintendent as well.
Mr. Zomack?
I think I would turn it over to Dr. Morris, but I will say that the building, although we have maintained the building in the shape it was turned over to us in, there are significant challenges with the building. It would take a tremendous amount of money to actually put children in classrooms in there now. We have done preliminary assessments of the building, and if you look at the heating system, there's asbestos in the building. Leaks in various utility closets, et cetera, et cetera, so. We put out bids, just to give you an idea, we put out bids when we were going through the LSSC process, and we had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The bids came in well over, I think in the 1.4 to 1.5, just to renovate part of the building. And that didn't even, it included some of the ADA issues. But even to make the building accessible would take hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So that's what I know on the town side. I can't speak to swing space.
Dr. Morris?
So I was going to say less eloquently what Mr. Zomack said, the first part, and I think for the second part, you know, while I can speak to 2001, you know, I didn't necessarily speak to some of the real safety issues and, I mean, those kids are all grown up, so maybe I can speak more openly now. But there were things like the dumbwaiter, which was still there, which was a huge safety risk for students. There were, where the heat is, you know, students could touch something very hot if they touched the wrong place in the classroom. And at a larger level, from a school safety and security perspective, like the difference in 2001 and 2018 is pretty significant and leave us, I was just saying, me feeling very vulnerable about students and staff in an emergency situation. There's no check-in, right? There was, parents came, they just walked in the building, right? This was before there were swipe cards, it was before we were locking doors. It was a different time, making me feel old, but it was a different time. And I think the final piece I'd say, just to be very pragmatic about it, is I know this, we'll do, I'll do the update for the Fort River feasibility study, but there's nothing that's imminent enough from my perspective to overplan for what the town is trying to do. Like if we had a building project and we had money and we're like, oh yeah, the construction is going to start in 2000, it's going to start next summer. Then we could say, okay, should we wait a couple of years for the town? But our current reality is we don't, we don't know if, we have no knowledge of any projects going forward in the extremely near future. And I'd like to think of other options around swing space as opposed to hoping we have a construction project that needs swing space. Fort River frankly is a really significant site. It's larger than some of our other sites that we have elementary schools in. And I do believe even if it ended up what a lot of districts do in terms of mobile trailers and things like that, if it was on the site, I'd feel more comfortable. And I think it actually would be more cost effective and certainly more accessible, so. I appreciate people's forward thinking about the swing space issue. For me, it's not something that I would recommend holding up this project for.
Thank you. Mr. Hornick?
I have one other perspective to add into this. Close to a year ago, I sent the then members of the school committee, which included you, Ms. Erdogan, Mr. Demling, and I guess Mr. Nakajima as well, a note that said that since the year 2000, over 700, the population of Amherst has been reduced by over 700 families with school age children. And I'm sure you all heard that again when the school enrollment committee came. So I think one of the things we need in Amherst is affordable housing, ideally for families. I can't tell you that that's the way the site's going to be used. And it's also a small site, so we're not going to replace those 700 families on the site. Nonetheless, it's very difficult to build affordable housing in Amherst. There's very little property available, which is why the housing trust was interested in this. So if you want to start to chip away at the problem of school enrollment, this may help. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further thoughts or questions? Okay, so.
I was just going to say, I really appreciate the 1928 photo. That is not my student teaching year, but I really do appreciate it.
But it's lovely to see the history, yeah. It's lovely to see the history and just to understand this building, I think you had mentioned before, you know, that these historic buildings in town actually have had a life before and, you know, and obviously played a very valuable role in our school community. So just to move us along, I know, Mr. Zomack, you were going to prepare a memo, I believe, right, for the
Yes, and I will get that to Dr. Morris.
Okay.
Or this would be for a meeting in early September?
Or perhaps late August.
Or maybe, yeah, potentially, yeah.
Sounds wonderful. I will do that and have some more supporting documentation, but I think between Mr. Hornick and myself, you've kind of heard the scope of it, and that's what our goal is. And we appreciate your time tonight.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Stay safe.
Yeah.
That wind sounds pretty rough out there, in the rain.
So I was actually going to ask.
Dr. Morris, yeah.
Could we have a two-minute recess?
Sure.
Just for the same reason, yeah.
Tell me when I become secretary.
Call the meeting back to order at 7:59. Okay, and moving along to the next topic on the agenda, which is the budget amendment, FY19 budget vote. So this was discussed at our last meeting. We're prepared for this item to be a vote tonight. And just as a reminder, for the committee and for those watching and listening, as we've discussed, town meeting had voted to add fifteen thousand dollars to our Amherst Schools budget for fiscal year 19 for the stated purposes of supporting after-school vouchers. But as we discussed at our last meeting, we do need to vote on this item before July 1st, right, is that the date? So that it can be properly dispersed, but that's just to accept the money. It's not actually to earmark it for any specific program at this time. So Dr. Morris had stated that he would come back to the committee at a later date in the fall with recommendations for how to appropriate the money. And we can have a conversation at that point about, you know, whether the suggestions, recommendations from the superintendent makes sense. So I don't know, Dr. Morris, is there anything else that you want to add to this before we move to a vote?
No, I think maybe, well, perhaps just one brief thing, which is just for people who may not remember or for the public, the reason I made the recommendation is that we still have uncertainty of the real cost of health insurance for next year in a larger way than we always have uncertainty because we're still hiring people. Basically, our, the health insurance trust fund was, is going to be in the red. And depending on the level to which it's in the red, is going to be, there's going to be a surcharge for the next two years related to that, to even that out as we make that transition. And so we won't know until what that, what that surcharge is till the year ends, because it's till, till you get to July, probably likely the beginning of August, till they accumulate all the claims for the last couple of months. So it was an estimate made that we included in our budget, the town included in their budget based on where we were in March when budgets were voted. We don't know what that surcharge will be, and it could have either, I think it's unlikely to have a positive impact on our budget, but it's possible that we could be starting the year in deficit because of that, and that's perhaps the reason that I'm recommendation, I'm recommending caution to come back to this a little later in the summer when we have clarity on what our health insurance costs will be, as well as staffing costs, as a number of variables will know. But that's the big one that is atypical in the year. Usually, you know, you lock in a rate and health insurance is going to go up 3% or it's going to go up 2%, or our experience in the past, sometimes it went up, you know, stayed flat, and we, there's no way to know that because we don't know how many claims are coming in for May and June. April we're caught up on, but for May and June, and that's going to influence how much health insurance costs the district as well as employees next year. It's a moving target and we won't know that cost until summer.
Okay, thank you for that. So are there any other questions or thoughts or comments? Mr. Demling?
Yeah, so last time I expressed a bit of a process philosophical quandary with just simply accepting this money, because based on the general idea that, you know, we go through a very extensive budget process that we coordinate with the rest of the town. And we're very mindful of how generous the town is and also the level of cooperation between the various departments and that this was a tough year for everybody. And therefore, the idea of accepting any larger slice of the pie that gets added on at the end, to me, makes me feel a little uneasy in terms of respecting the process. You know, but having thought of it, about that for a while, I guess I feel less concerned about that at this point. Reason being that, so we're talking about fifteen thousand dollars, which is, which is not zero, you know, I fully get that. But in a, in a budget of over twenty million dollars, it's not, it's not a deal breaker. And when you think about the process of how this was applied, you know, the all, the normal budget process went through, just as it should be, and then the legislative branch had its opportunity to have a say on it and passed a motion that was completely legal and above board, and so so I guess I'm, because of the order of magnitude, I'm, I feel more open to accepting the additional funds. If this was like a hundred and fifty thousand, if this was 1.5 million, something that would have a could have a significant impact elsewhere in the town's budget, I think I would feel a lot differently. But the fact that this is the order of magnitude we're talking about, I think, I think I'm, I'm fine with that. In terms of earmarking it, in an ideal world, you know, in a regular budget season, I think it would probably be best to adhere to the spirit of its allocation, even though, as you stated, it's, we don't, we're not tied to the purpose. We're not in a normal budget year, either last year or next year. And so I'm, I'm fine with delaying where it's, it can be most effectively allocated to have the biggest benefit for the most number of students, if there is a much more critical need for, for funding a couple of months from now, so.
Any other thoughts or comments? I'll also take a motion if anyone wants to make one. And then proposed motion language is actually here.
I move to adopt a budget of twenty-three million, two hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred sixty-five dollars for fiscal year 2019 for the Amherst Elementary Schools.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor? Please raise your hand. He carries. Okay, thank you. I also just very quickly want to say that I am looking forward to the recommendations from Dr. Morris on this particular item. And I agree with Mr. Demling in terms of, you know, having some concerns. For me, it was primarily that I actually do, and I had mentioned this before, when we had the original discussion around the after-school programming, recognize how important after-school programming is, and if we can provide that for more students, I think that's a benefit, right? And so I am hopeful that we can actually use this money in a way that will help meet that need to the degree possible. And so, you know, I'm looking forward to a conversation when we come back about this. Okay, so moving along. Next item is an update on the Fort River Feasibility Study Committee. And since Mr. Nakajima is not here, perhaps Dr. Morris can update the committee on this topic?
So the last meeting, which I was able to, the last meeting was June 8th, and I was able to attend that meeting. And much of the focus was on the selection process for designer services. RFQ for design services has been published. There were, you know, firms that expressed interest. And we're in the process now of creating, there's been a selection committee that's been created, that actually group makes a recommendation to town managers, the way the procurement process works. And we settled on who was going to be on that and that, with the process by which that group would go about and having public interviews and that sort of thing, so they're they're working on the scheduling and those pieces, but there was general agreement that a subset of the building committee, feasibility committee would be the ones who were interviewing the candidates, not the full committee. I think the other thing to note is that performance, air quality, indoor air quality testing was completed. There's actually some follow-up needed at Fort River, not enough, that could sound like a negative thing. There's just, they need to get some more data on different days, different weather kind of days. For Fort River, the Wildwood, we followed that same, if you remember, there was capital funds and we use the same consultant so that we could be apples to apples comparison. So by the time we get back in August, we should have data and results that we'll be able to share, and I'd like to add that to a topic at our next meeting in August for both buildings.
Any questions for Dr. Morris from the committee? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for that, Dr. Morris. So moving us to the next topic, which is regionalization board update. Mr. Demling, you mentioned a little bit about this earlier, but maybe you want to actually give us a full update?
Sure. So for those of you new to this topic, and for the rest of you, this will be a broken record, but I'm going to do this every time. So we are exploring the potential of regionalizing our pre-K to six district, this committee, this district with Pelham's pre-K to six. We already share our superintendent and central offices and curriculum. And so the idea is, is this a win-win for both districts on the educational, financial and governance levels? And those are the kind of three main categories we've started to think about in terms of what are the potential benefits and what are the, what are the questions? You know, Pelham had a school options committee where they determined that regionalizing with Amherst seems to be the best thing for them to explore for their long-term financial sustainability, viability of their school. And for Amherst, the immediate obvious potential is regional and viability of their school, and for Amherst, the immediate obvious potential is regional transportation reimbursement, which even at seventy percent is about a quarter million added to our budget, and there's a number of other potential financial benefits that we're just starting to catalog. So basically, schedule-wise, we're, we're clarifying now more on trying to hit a target where we, where we get our consultants hired, we do our sort of first pass-level analysis to where our, our board, so it's a six-member board, three from Amherst, three from Pelham, is able to get a handle on the biggest questions that we want to ask the community, and kind of the one-on-one base of knowledge that we want to impart, so when we, when we go out and we're at family night at Crocker Farm, we can say, hey, here's the twenty-second intro to the regionalization, you know, what are your concerns? So we're hoping that this fall can be a very heavy public engagement time, and that then, we can then take that back and do our, our own in-depth sort of digest of that. And I, I mentioned this earlier, but I expect that we would want to be working pretty closely with both the Amherst School Committee and Pelham School Committee. So in terms of schedule, I, I think we would like to, just looking at the very back of our packet, be on the agenda for that first August meeting, that would actually be pretty good timing, so if we're going on track, we should be just about ready to go in terms of public engagement by that point, and that would be a good point to touch base with the school committee. I think I'd also like to just give you a heads up that we'll, we'll probably want to email you information along the way as well. We'd, we'd like it to be more than just a, an intro-level one-on-one for the school committee, you know, you, you should have like quite a bit of detailed information before we come and talk about, you know, what are the biggest issues and such, so we have a really good in-depth discussion. The other thing I wanna mention about the schedule is that the way the board works, it's kind of a part-one, part-two thing, where part-one is the board coming to a place where we either recommend for or, or not regionalizing. After that, there's then this second point where we need to draft a regional agreement and a long-term educational plan, that's a whole nother ball of wax that includes more public engagement, getting really down into the nitty-gritty, and the very end of that is a vote, and then that vote has to happen before the end of a calendar year, so before December thirty-first, if the district is going to become anew the next year. So what that all means is that the very earliest that this regionalization could happen would be September of twenty twenty, which means we would have to have everything completely wrapped up by twelve thirty-one nineteen, the end of next year, which seems like a long time, but it's, it's, once, once we, because we have mapped out all the different questions we wanna answer and dive deeply into, it's, it's quite a lot of work, so. That being said, there's, there's the sense on the committee that we don't, we wanna take as much time as we need to, but not anymore, right? If this could be done on the order of, you know, eighteen months as opposed to thirty, we'd rather do that in the interest of both districts, so that's how we're proceeding. And the, the reason I brought it up in the earlier comment is that when I was giving this kind of an update at CPAC meeting, the CPAC chair made an excellent point that there's another working group that's gonna happen this summer, in terms of getting down to the specifics of where our specialized programs should be located, the building blocks, and spacing on the name of the other.
Ames.
Ames, I'm sorry.
Ames and Alson, yeah.
Yeah, you know, Wildwood and Forever and whatnot, and that we wanna make sure that, that that effort and this effort are aware of each other at the proper time, right? We don't, we don't want the location of the specialized programs to be completely set in stone, and then all of a sudden realize there's another school involved. And it, it was, it was actually a really good example for us to be aware of at the regional planning board level of, of enrollment zones. So we've talked about potential financial benefits, we've talked about governance issues that we'd have to tackle in terms of what the composition of the school committee be, but enrollment zones in terms of, well, where, where's my kid gonna go to school when there's a fourth building in the mix, and what would, what access would Pelham have? You know, what, what could students in Pelham access the dual-language program? Would Amherst families that are closer to Pelham Elementary than any other building be able to access that school? These are all big questions, and we wanna make sure that we're talking to all the, you know, the enrollment working groups at the proper time. So, you know, as I mentioned to Dr. Morris, that, that, you know, the superintendent's the person who should be flying at that sixty thousand foot level and giving us a heads up as to who you should be talking to, so we're gonna make sure that we keep the superintendent updated, and making sure those efforts are moving along in, in Pelham. So, yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll be forwarding your information, the school committee information as, as we go on, even, even before we meet, so people are updated.
I think that would be incredibly helpful, and also, you know, I think looking for, we had talked before about trying to set some milestones that are publicly shared as broadly as we can, because it is such a huge question for so many different families, for all the reasons that you just raised, Mr. Demling. And, you know, as we go into our planning and goal-setting for next year, I really wanna see this elevated to the degree that it needs to be, which is so that the community can actually pay attention and, you know, understand what's happening well in advance. September twenty twenty feels like a long time away at this point, but it's really not, I mean, it's only two years, right? And so, you know, I think by the time that people realize what's happening, it's, you know, it's moved along so far, just even in conversation, and so, you know, we really wanna make sure that we're setting up, you know, very specific, I, I would call them not even milestones, probably just goalposts, right? To help, you know, raise awareness and make sure that people know where to, to plug in for this kind of information. And again, I'm just gonna say it's really helpful to have these updates at every single one of our meetings, so we actually don't even have to make extra room for it, right? It's, you know, maybe just take a little extra time for the update, which is totally fine, but we, you know, this has been done on purpose so that if the community is just plugging in, they can hear, you know, oh, this is, you know, a conversation happening, and kind of figure out where we are from there. Thank you. Okay, if there's no more discussion on that topic, we'll move along then to the enrollment working group.
So I'll try to briefly summarize and then see if there's questions. So I think there's multiple groups meeting over the summer, so I'm gonna try to catalog them well. So one, there was a call-out to all families and staff, and I think it was just referenced by Mr. Demling, for a group to look a little more in-depth, and to pick up where the enrollment group focused on specialized programs, specialized, specialized programs left off, so that's gonna be a collaboration between Nancy Stewart and CPAC, as well as the Student Services Office, but they're looking for representatives from staff, both general staff, as well as staff within the programs, and really targeting parents within the specialized program as well to be participants. So that went out, I wanna say, last week, maybe last Thursday or Friday, there was...
It was in your newsletter.
It was in the newsletter, and then, right, and it was in the newsletter as well. So that's one group. The second group, which we've talked about here before, is La Cienra, and so that's a group specific, specifically looking at dual-language programming with MABE, and so I know Ms. Chamberlain has gotten a number of staff members who are interested, and then, based on actually some feedback sessions we had back in April, she's reached out to some of the families who express an interest, and particularly making, ensuring that we have bilingual families who are part of this process as well. So she still has a little bit of work to do, but that's gonna be some, I don't remember the dates exactly, but sometime in mid-August is when the trainers are coming up, they're not local, they're, they're, they don't live here, but they have experience working with school districts. Ms. Chamberlain and myself had a really good phone call with Ms. Hardy last week, where we were like, oh my God, we feel like not prepared, and she's like, no, you're so much further ahead than the districts that are implementing in the fall, you know, which made us feel both better and worse. But, you know, so many of the questions will be answered by, in terms of curricular pedagogy and school-wide culture, by that group, to then be vetted by the larger faculty, larger community, but I know Ms. Chamberlain's eagerly looking forward to those two days to sort of, you know, all these unanswered questions that aren't really about enrollment zones, which I'll get into a little bit, but they're about, what does this look like on the ground, and how do we make sense of specialized and DLL programming within this model, so having some experts come and lead them in that, in a, in a two-day model that's been used, it's, comes from New Mexico, from the version of MABE that's in New Mexico, but it's been transported up here to New England. Third, at a four, is that the work of Wildwood and Crocker Farm staff to do more of the visioning, not in a dual-language approach, but in a more direction of our school approach, so that's actually a similar timeline, mid-August, and similar organization of having about eight, nine, ten people in a group. Kristin Rodriguez is gonna facilitate, she's the facilitator of the enrollment working group, she likes us so much, she's willing to come back, and that'll be two days in the summer, and then two days in the fall. She met with us virtually twice now, virtually, I mean, not almost met with us, but met with us via Skype or something, I know that could be interpreted multiple ways.
Remote.
Remote, thank you, through video chat, multiple times to get our thoughts on things, and by primarily talking about the principles of those, some central office directors were present as well. So I know the principals are reaching out, trying to get rosters of families who are interested to be involved in that work, and we're excited to work with, with Dr. Rodriguez again. And the last group, which is the one I'm still struggling with, not struggling with, but in terms of, that's the wrong word, I'm still struggling to figure out the best mechanism, is the one we discussed last time, which is, how do we get a group of people to talk about enrollment zones and, and that piece, and, and perhaps I'm still looking for feedback tonight on how to approach that task, what's the right group of people, my concerns about who can come in with a kind of impartial viewpoint, some of the work around this has already been done, and, and in terms of looking at multiple sites and what would make sense, and for instance, why Crocker Farm would be a really tough site because of space, and so, I have some thoughts to share, but before I do, I just wondered if the committee's done any more thinking since the last time we spoke about it, and has anything to share, and then perhaps I could share some more of my current thinking, or we could do it with the reverse, whatever makes sense for the committee.
Looking to the committee to see if I'm happy to hear first.
Okay.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, I know I'll be a broken record on this, but just, I, I continue to hear the same, the same assumption, that it's, it's still this idea that Fort River's gonna be a magnet school.
Right.
Right, and so this is gonna be open to everybody, right? And I, I still get more surprised than I do, oh yes, when I say, no, no, this is primarily a Fort River program, and then we're talking about potentially choicing in at a certain level, and so, there's a lot of, there's still some level of confusion around that. And, and, and just, it's still the, the question of, you know, what, I, I think, I think maybe the thing that would help maybe frame discussions, this doesn't really help you answer your question, but it sort of helps set the tone of the first meeting, is what are the, what are the restricting parameters around the potential enrollment zone options you can consider? For example, transportation cost is a huge issue, right? And so, everybody should go wherever they want, okay, well, transportation's gonna be expensive in that, you know, scenario, and what are the other considerations? Well, you don't want a thousand kids at one school and nobody at the second school, so that's another. I think framing that so that it's not just a wide-open discussion, and, and maybe also addressing some of the reasons of the previous enrollment rezoning that happened, to get to our current place, and whether those motivations are still relevant. You know, there's, there's different opinions about, about what level, for example, of, of economic disadvantage percent you wanna get to in a particular school, particularly if you're doing something innovative, like having a dual-language program, that, that may cross, may affect those, those boundaries. And, you know, in other, in other populations, like if you're gonna concentrate specialized programs in a particular building, your specialized percentage is gonna go up, for example. So yeah, it's, it's a big challenge talking to the earnest public that isn't, doesn't have their head in this kind of space all the time, because I know even from a school committee perspective, I have much trouble rebooting the context, talking about it, because there are so many different moving parts in it, so it's probably not enough, I just iterated about three or four different problems.
No. Dr. Morris?
Yeah, so I mean, my experience has been, which, which doesn't mean it's universal, but when people ask me that question, or when I was in the forums with, with different families, the question would come, why Fort River? And then when I cited the work of the enrollment working group and the rationale, everyone's like, whether they're happy or not, right, and by happy, I mean disappointed or not happy, so, wrong nomenclature. You know, there was some, they understood that there was working groups in the past, whether they were aware of them or not, many of these were preschool families who, who didn't have a context of that, that it made sense, but I think it begged the larger question of, okay, so if it's gonna be at Fort River, like, if you can kind of, willing sense of disbelief, right, like, you know, we believe that work happened that pointed in that direction, still of who gets to go, and how much is Fort River population, and how does it work, and can we just drive our kids there, is that really an equity concern? I don't know, I get it's an equity concern, but like, how do we resolve that? Like, it still doesn't answer the questions we will have, so I think there's, there's multiple things going on, is one is, kind of, there was a decision at least to explore it primarily at Fort River, and, and, you know, there's that piece, but then the larger piece for me is not actually focused on that, it's, if that happens, who gets to go, what's the priorities, do we really wanna prioritize having Latino families go? Do we wanna prioritize Spanish-speaking families? And those are two really different things, that, one's based on ethnicity and culture, and one's based on language proficiency, which are, you know, there's some correlation for sure, but they're certainly not the same. Do we wanna prioritize providing transportation for some families to go, because we can do it, and it's cost-neutral, and it's consistent with our equity values, or is it unfair if we're providing some transportation for some families outside the catchment area and not others? Those are the critical pieces that I think need a group to work on. So what I was gonna propose, if it's okay, was, was sending an email, it probably won't happen till next week, but, you know, people would be sad without the Friday updates from Mrs. Morland, so they'll be fine getting another email and asking for volunteers. And, and the thing that I get concerned about perhaps is people who, who perhaps can come in not trying to advocate for anything, but people who are really dedicated to us getting it right, and there's no way to judge that, but what I don't wanna have happen is it turning into a, you know, personnel, personal piece, like, you know, you're on the group because you're hoping that your child gets in, and, and yes, there might be a bus route that goes past where you live, or be caught, you know, I mean, those are the pieces that, talking to a couple of the districts get really complicated, when it, it involves people's individual children, on the flip side, that's who's most invested, is if it's gonna affect their actual children, if they have preschool families, and so I don't think there's a way around it, I think putting out an open call, reaching out specifically to the preschool families who have already been at meetings, so that we include them in the conversations. And really, to your point, Mr. Demling, I thought it was helpful to my piece, is setting up the parameters of, here's some decisions that were made, you know, why we're looking at Fort River site in particular, here's the rationale for it, we're open to thinking about that, but what we're really focused on is, it's gonna be somewhere in town, and how do we actually set up boundaries that seem like the right ones that match our community values and what our district values? Because I think we could end up in the Fort River, Wildwood, Crocker Farm conversation forever, and, and maybe I'm forecasting too much, but I actually am not sure that's the most useful conversation to have, with Fort River staff doing La Cienra in the summer, I mean, to a certain extent, if we're going to do it in the fall of twenty nineteen, enrollment zones is an open book, you know, the site probably is less so at this point, who goes to that site is an open book, but, so I think that's the piece that I think about, and I'm gonna really have to think about how to frame a description of the work that gives people an honest perspective of what, what, what the group can work on and what's probably not in the purview of the group. So that, those are my initial thoughts, and I'm really open to your feedback.
So I, I would actually, I hear, I hear what Dr. Morris is saying, and I appreciate that, you know, I would, I would say, I actually think we need a step before that point, and I agree with Mr. Demling that articulating the questions that we're trying to answer first are critical to all of this, right? And I think, you know, we've gotten a part of the way there, given the, the conversation that we had last year in relation to even setting up this enrollment working group and having some of those initial, you know, explorations, if you will, done. But I think that whole process has raised a whole new set of questions, right? And we still have not actually answered a lot of the questions that were set by the last time that we, you know, reset boundaries, and, you know, have we been successful, right? I think to a certain degree, we, we kind of have, we did manage to establish balance, for example, and socioeconomic balance in, you know, most of our schools, but we're seeing, you know, trends shifting, right, and, you know, and Fort River is a perfect example of that. And I think that there's also, you know, still some outstanding questions about, you know, when you are re-establishing or rezoning certain boundaries, what happens with those students who end up getting pulled away from their communities, right? And, you know, we haven't really come up with a satisf, as, as far as I've seen, a satisfactory answer to that. Is this, is this okay? Should we continue that practice, or is this one that we actually need to revisit and come up with a different answer, right? From what I've heard from the community, there's actually quite a bit of evidence to say we probably need to come up with a different answer, that this, you know, it's, it's enough of an impact for some of these students who feel pulled away and isolated, that we probably need to think about maybe an alternative solution for them, you know, and, and we don't have enough information about any of those questions yet to be able to say, okay, let's come up with a whole new set of parameters. So, you know, I, I think, again, to, to piggyback on Mr. Demling's comments earlier, I think it benefits all of us to revisit some of those initial questions, you know, and literally looking back at where we were a few years ago, when, you know, Marx Meadow was, was closed, and all these other big decisions that were made, find out from there, have we made progress, is, you know, the decisions that were made then, are those good decisions? Should we, you know, you know, revisit some of those initial assumptions that have been made? And then I think it's about setting that new, a new set of criteria, or, you know, a new set of questions that build off of those on how we proceed, right? Because I do agree that it, it does feel rather mushy right now, it feels very open-ended, and I understand why, there's a lot of information that's been coming back at us, but at the same time, in order... But at the same time, in order for us to make any recommendations or even to pose a question to the community, we need to know what the the what is, right? And, you know, and right now, we don't know what the what is, and so, you know, I'm I'm hopeful that when we come back in the next year. That we can actually start off from a place of here's where we were before, this is the path that we took from that point in time. This is where we want to be and or at least this, these are the questions that we wanna ask to find out where we wanna be moving forward. And that that hopefully can help, you know, lead us in a, in a different trajectory, and then the last thing that I would say is just. In terms of of community engagement, you know, I keep coming back to that all the time. But I do think that, you know, because this is such a big topic, right? And there's, you know, people are gonna have a lot of opinions. You know, I think we do wanna hear people advocating on, you know, but but they need to be able to start first from a place of understanding. Uh, because otherwise, it's just rumor or fear and conjecture and it's not necessarily built on, you know. So we have to do a much better job of sharing where the starting point is, what those initial questions are that we're trying to ask. Um, and really framing that for the community, so, you know, I'm hoping that um, you know, maybe the summer provides some time. To think about some of this, come back to the committee at the start of the new year with, you know, at least those initial questions and initial, you know, ideas. Um, and then we can start that conversation from there. Is there, you know, does that make sense to to the rest of the committee? Are there any other follow up thoughts or Dr. Morris, if you have a response?
Do, but I it visually it looked like you might have sparked something in another member, so um I'll defer.
So I guess I, it because I left the last meeting where we, and and I was the one who wanted to put this on the agenda, or at least one of the people who wanted to put this. On the agenda, hearing that we should postpone it until um the fall. And I'm hearing that again, and I guess I'm also hearing though from Dr. Morris that, you know, and also from the community, there's a lot of excitement about this. And this is one of the major roadblocks to getting it done, um, so while I share the concern that. You know, I see this as opening a lot of um issues in terms of um if we create um Fort River as a magnet school. And then we have these new visions for the other schools, does this mean that now Amherst is moving back in the direction of having the ability to choice into amongst the three? Or potentially four schools, because we're also talking about regionalization right now, so I I I guess I'm I'm having trouble thinking about how we balance. The desire to make sure that this dual language school is up and running as soon as possible, possible, because I hear a huge demand in the community for it. But because I'm hearing the huge demand in the community for it, I'm also really concerned that if we do it wrong, you know, there're gonna be a lot of people who are gonna hear from. And are gonna be super concerned about why isn't my child uh um eligible or what, you know, I live in this district, but I. Only people have the means to move into the Fort River district could could take advantage of it, so I I guess I. You know, and I also was on the enrollment working group and we did talk about these enrollments and issues at length and and I I don't feel like. Having been on the equity, you know, piece of it where we were looking at socioeconomic balance between the 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 three schools. I do feel like we do have answers to some of the questions that you were raising, not complete ones, but I'm not sure we ever will, so um. I don't see the problem with starting the conversation sooner rather than later, because I do think it is going to be the thing that, if anything, is going to halt this process. Um, is it, it, it will and and um. So I I guess I would, I would just push back a little bit and say, if there's something, some way to start this over the summer. I don't think it would be finalized over the summer, but to to start the process, because I think it is gonna be a difficult process. Um, and there's gonna be a lot of feelings about it and rightly so. So um, the other thing I wanted to point out, just in response to what Dr. Morris was saying earlier, is that um. I think it's good that we have this list of preschool families who have been engaged from the beginning, but just especially as people with young children are. Often the ones who are moving in at the last minute or, you know, also the ones who maybe had a sickness and couldn't go to that meeting but are still really interested in it. Um, I I think it would be great if we could find a way to um make sure we have as wide a net possible, trying to get those folks engaged. And so if we could continue to do things like post it on Facebook or um, which I think you said was particularly effective, but. I'm not sure we should yet c- consider that list kind of a the list and 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 if there's a way to continue to add people to that pool of potential. Community members who become engaged in the process, I'm I'm not sure the best way to do it, but I think it's important that we, we don't um close that door yet.
I I was going to comment um a little bit on what Ms. Bister said about the the work that her particular subgroup had done, that I think we have a lot of. Data and and sort of reporting on sort of what's changed since um since our previous um redistrict and re-zoning. I would, I I, but I I think this might be where you were getting at, Mr. Dumbling, with about all the different moving pieces. And that there's so many things, I I. I sh- share the concern of getting the conversation going sooner rather than later with the community, but I worry that there's too many moving pieces. That if we start now, it's a little bit premature, because something could evolve. Um, and I don't know what, but it it, we're so early in the process with so many things and balls in the air. That some things could change that sort of preempt whatever recommendations or options that that a working group might be. Pulling together, and I wonder if instead of thinking of it as a working group that's going to be looking at zoning and sort of how we might. Decide how enrollment for the dual language, that we use these groups or whatever as a way of at least airing. And getting more input and ideas and questions on on the table. Because I also think that getting information out there about what this, what, what are some of the the solid lines and parameters? Like that it will be at Fort River and some of these, you know, some of the trains have left the station, not all, but sort of using the time to. Get, get input, get questions, get ideas, just very high level ideas from the community um. Then help us as a committee to form sort of what are those guide rails um that we want to use. When we do get to the point that we're deciding on zoning, and I'm thinking of some of the things. One of the wonderful things about the enrollment working group was that the, there was very few parameters given to us, we could sort of. We were just asked to look at the data and come up with some ideas. I think in this particular situation, we we may want to put more guardrails there in terms of, you know. Whatever the solutions are, it needs to be cost neutral for, from a transportation perspective, or an increase of only this. Or it's got to, and you know, we need to end up in a situation that doesn't disrupt our socioeconomic balance across the three schools and. And sort of giving those parameters upfront of what might be, what would be acceptable or appropriate solutions to that. Um, and I think we need more time to do that and need to hear a little bit more from the community before we can sort of set those parameters and guardrails.
So I, you know, just to to reflect back, I mean, I think um. I ju- I I wanna make sure that before we we pose questions out there to the community. You know, and I think both of our committee members just talked about the enrollment working group and and being enmeshed in that working group and being. You know, aware of all the data that exists, we cannot make that assumption about the rest of the community, right? And so I think that um there has to be a reflection point where people. You know, are, it's clearly synthesized for them exactly what the findings were. And I, and I would say that I think we have, we have some data, some questions were answered, not all of them, right? And so, you know, the the reasons that we undertook the in so, the the rezoning years ago. We again saw some successes in some areas, but not in all, and so, you know, I think we need to, we need to say that, we need to share that, right? Because before we move down this path again, because it is in part, and then, you know, I've been talking about this for a while now, it is in part connected to um. The question of dual language, you know, immersion school and any of the other magnet ideas that that may be uh getting explored right now, but not completely. Like, there is an aspect of this that actually is just about the importance of, you know, enrollment zoning, right? And whether or not we were to pursue these other, you know, um ideas for these individual schools. We still would need to ask this question, because we're seeing trends changing and, you know, so we we do need to understand the reasons why, you know, the, some of these trends are changing. Reflect that back to the community and set some of those parameters, so that if, when we are asking those questions, you know, of of folks. They are starting from the same place that we are, right? And it's not just, you know, us being here and them being down here or someplace completely separate. So that's, you know, I just wanted to clarify that, I think um, you know, when we are, we start opening. Sort of these different cans, right, of questions and peeling back and asking the community to get engaged, which is all wonderful, you know, I I I think it's incredibly important. But we need to make sure that they're, they're starting from the same place that we are, so they're, you know, and and they're coming along with us and they're not just getting pulled along. Because then again, that's where a lot of the misunderstanding and, you know, things come from. Dr. Morris?
So, it's really helpful dialogue and um, the thing, and I've said it before, but I'm gonna say it again, I think the thing, the reason this one is particularly. Requires a lot of um different kind of thought for me is because zoning is, you know, at the end of the day, it's gonna come up as a school committee. It's, you know, in terms of, and I think we've shared responsibilities well, it's not like a who does what, but but there's some reality to the fact that. There's a community-wide um issue, not about dual language, to your point exclusively, um, and certainly that, you know, I would ask for a vote on that as well, but that's. More in my bellywink in terms of educational programming, I think the zoning is 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 a wider, broader um. Topic and just this conversation makes me think, and no one's gonna wanna do this, especially after we're talking about subcommittees, we're entering summer, but if there was a a subcommittee. That wanted to work with me for the next couple of months on this, um, cause I think once a month meetings at the school committee don't afford the kind of time and flexibility to do that. I I do feel like summer is a valuable time, whether it's that small group working with me or a larger group or figuring out that. I don't feel like I wanna enter our August meeting where I am now. Like, that doesn't feel good to me and it, and it actually, to me, sort of compromises or or makes me question whether fall twenty nineteen is feasible. So I do wonder if there's a working group that's of, just frankly, of school committee members and that's more of a planning group, you know, it would only, could only be two. But would meet on a very regular basis with me and not long meetings and like I'm conscious of time and summer schedules. Uh, but really to think about this, cause I think it's such a weighty topic that that's gonna come both to the superintendent, to me, my role, but also to your role, your roles. Individually and collectively, that perhaps that's the next step that might be beneficial, um, because I think dialogue here is helpful, but actually. Kind of routine, regular discussions and planning might be the thing that helps us get from here to where we wanna be, so.
Ms. Bister, Mr. Dumbling?
Um, I feel like that would be a good compromise between opening up to the public, cause I I also would feel really. Uncomfortable if we didn't move forward on this in some way, and I'd be more than happy to, to be part of such a, a group.
Yeah, I feel like in terms of facilitation, whether it's from, from your point of view or the school committee members' point of view or administrators. Yeah, I feel like, I feel like we, in in our, I feel like there has to be, not that it's not, it's a fine point, but it's not, it's not that we're making the decision. Ahead of time and saying, hey, it's prebaked, just sign off on this. Good old public, right? It's, it's saying, oh, we've, we've thought through all the um, the benefits and obstacles of having two classes versus four classes. And this is why you you can't or can do X, Y, Z, so so that when those questions come up, we have some, some more answers. So that doesn't, it doesn't feel like we're we're starting from one on one at the same time the public is. So yeah, so that, so just a couple of other like small comments, so in terms of like trying to lock in some of these variable values that will, that will hone down. The um, the possibilities of what we have to discuss, you know, one, one thing I brought up in in the past is is what I just mentioned, that. I- is this gonna be two classes or or is this gonna be the whole school? Cause in terms of access and on the number of spots that open. It's a nice idea for there to be, you know, four classes, that obviously means more staff and transportation and capacity for Fort River, so that all has to be. And even, even if that's clearly not a practical possibility, I think we have to be all well seasoned in the reason why. Like, you know, did you try to make this bigger? Yes, we did, and here's why that it has to be this size. And uh, yeah, and I like this idea of kind of a, a, a summer group, um, because, you know, like, like you mentioned before, Dr. Morris, this is what kills dual language programs. Uh, in enrollment zones, and the thing that I always, I always come back to is, no matter how wonderfully you do it. Changing enrollment zones is incredibly disruptive to X number of students, you know, and you can get that X value down pretty slow, but. Uh, for the families of those students, it's, it's a hundred percent disruptive, because that's their, it's their education, that's their student, their education and. You know, the other thing I think is is important for us to try and communicate to the public as much as possible is that enrollment zones are imperfect systems. Like, right now, our enrollment zones are pretty good, but they have problems, and what we're trying to get to is another system that is going to have problems. It's gonna be imperfect, you know, like, we can, we can get down to the final draft and can have people come to the microphone and saying, you still have X, Y, Z problem. And we're gonna say, yes, that's right, we we have not created a solution without problems, and we're gonna have to, you know, live with that and and accept, is is it worth going forward? Given that the problems, which may be the same or new, the next system, um, I think that can sometimes be frustrating when, particularly, you know, when you're remember, when you're. Taking up the, your precious amount of time to come to some public forum, right? And you realize at the end of the day that what you're, you're working on is not going to be perfect. Is not gonna solve all, it could be really frustrating, um, so I think that's something important for us to communicate.
So uh, I'm also happy to to serve on this group, I think it's a great idea, um, for all the reasons that have already been stated. And um. And yeah, and working over the summer makes a whole lot of sense, moving this forward, I think this is very similar to the conversation that we had after the failed uh building vote. Just in terms of the community feeling urgency around moving these things forward, you know, I know I feel them, it sounds like the committee does too, and so. We definitely want to, and and so does the superintendent, uh, we definitely wanna try to answer these questions sooner rather than later. So Dr. Morris, I guess we'll look to you to to reach, I'm sorry, did you?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I I also um think that's a great idea, I mean, it was, um, so my, my suggestion was um. To gather all that information, to get that and to have sort of a common ground, when I said parameters, it's it's parameters and also sort of the common foundation. For everybody to understand what, what we're looking at and what that looks like, I also would be eager to be a part of that, but I guess we can't have more than two, so.
Unless we wanna post the meetings and make them. I'm sorry to me to jump in, that was inappropriate, but.
Well, so I I guess that's a question for for you, Dr. Morris, like what, you know, what would be most helpful, right, is uh, you have, you know. Um, a public meeting that, you know, is is um open for, you know, and I, I think that that could work. You know, or is it a smaller group that's just sort of working here and there, so?
Uh, for me, it's just about the logistics that are more important, I don't really mind if it's public or not public, but, you know, what's the ability of. Multiple school committee members to set up, I mean, cause I'm thinking like every other week meetings, I'm not, not thinking like once a month, so. Depends on people's schedules, so, I mean, I think one thing we could do is um assess members willingness and then schedules. And and see how many people can come and if we have more than two, then we'll post it, and if it's a week where one person's away, we're only gonna have two people, then. You know, we wouldn't necessarily have to post it, I suppose, although it's probably, you know, we'll, we'll have to have that conversation, but I'm flexi- the, the public, not public. Public piece doesn't really, um, that's not a factor for me, it's just frankly with the logistics, yeah.
So you'll send out uh some sort of?
Yeah, we'll figure it out, great.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, uh, so moving on, the agenda, the next item of business is the FY nineteen school committee calendar. Speaking of upcoming meetings, um, so that is the last page on this pack, in this packet.
Of course, I realized after uh, when I sat down tonight before, after Ms. Miss Will had printed it, that the, the first Amherst meeting, that'd be the same night as first night, so it 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 won't be the twenty. That's my, my mistake, yeah, um, but but I would like to meet in August, I think doesn't, just think of the conversation we just had, I think it'd be good to meet. Sometime in August and I, and I don't know about people's schedules and vacation schedules, but um, I wouldn't wanna wait till September for this group to get back together if it's at all possible.
But could we potentially do it the night before, the Monday, the twenty seventh?
That would work for me.
Instead of doing another doodle poll, I'm just.
Purple tunnel for Ms. Westmoreland.
I will note that I am, the only week I'm on vacation is the week of August twentieth, so I will not be able to make the regional meeting, but it's a big enough group, but I think that's fine.
Do you think you'd be able to make the twenty seventh?
I believe.
Monday, okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so that's one change, um, any other comments, reflections? It's also helpful to have a set of parents here in different schools. Who can make us aware of, uh, not that you haven't already sort of cross, you know, checked all these different calendars, but.
Well, it continues on the back.
Pressures, yeah, there's two more meetings in the back.
I guess I would just say that, given the um amount of different moving parts that we just discussed throughout our agenda, that we shouldn't.
That we shouldn't be shocked if we have to add another meeting here or there, especially during big decision times.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just, I, I created a list and I know obviously it's a long way away, but just things that we wanna make sure, I would wanna make sure are on the agenda, um. I'd like to start that goal conversation right away in August and not wait till September. Um, enrollment, enrollment working group update, um, all of that.
Are we moving on to planning for?
I suppose. I skipped ahead. I apologize.
I just wanted to, if, if there was any other.
A hundred percent August date. I got excited about having an August date that was settled and we didn't have to doodle poll and I went too far.
I mean, this looks fine to me and I, I can't think of any other issues or, so we don't have to, do we have to vote on this? We don't have to vote on the calendar, so yeah, I think we're good. Okay, thank you. So, um, do, do we wanna accept gifts maybe before we get to?
No, 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 you, I jumped the gun. Oh, so they're not in my bag, okay.
So, um, everyone should have a list of gifts that were, um, it should be a separate sheet that you've got. It's not in the package. And I will take a motion. Make the motion, um.
Yes.
I move to accept the gifts from. First from Wagner Wood, five cubic yards of loam and delivery to elementary garden program at Wildwood. Um, the gift from James. I'm probably doing this one. No, you're not. Point of order though, uh, so Wagner Wood, um, it says five cubic yards of loam and delivery. Was there any way to get an estimate on how much that would cost or what, what the donation actually represents?
They do not, uh, I'm sorry, Dr.
No, no, please.
I'm looking at.
From the treasurer is that we do not assign a value. The company itself can assign a value and ask for a letter to that effect, but. The treasurer does not assign a value to gifts. Um, if they're not monetary gifts.
Okay, so no, no value was assigned on this one?
Right.
Is that what it is? Okay, thank you very much. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, that's fine.
Please continue with the motion. Okay, um. I move to approve the gift from James Quoc and Sylvia Brandt, um. To support Crocker Farm Preschool at the Program Director's Discretion in the amount of five thousand dollars. The Stop and Shop Rewards, number seven, eight, two, seven, nine, nine, four. To support Fort River at the Principal's Discretion in the amount of five hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. And to accept the gift from Lucia Spiro, number six, eight, seven, five. To support Crocker Farm at the Principal's Discretion in the amount of four hundred dollars for a total of five thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Great, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion, Ms. Dr. Morris?
Thankfully, um, they're all generous and I, I, I don't wanna pick out one to the other. Uh, Lucia Spiro was a longtime teacher who retired, I wanna say five or six years ago. Um, she taught ELL, uh, both at Fort River and Crocker Farm. And the neat part of the story is she came and many, as well as multiple other retired teachers to the Cambodian mural unveiling on Friday. So it's wonderful to see, um, Ms. Spiro. Um, and I worked closely with her as, as, uh, in multiple roles that I had actually, and, um, it's just so nice to see. Retired teachers giving back both literally in terms of this, but also attending, uh, community events. And she was deeply connected to. The Cambodian community and heard about the event and wanted to come, so, uh, but she was not the only retired staff member, um, who was present, so it's just. Lovely to note that, and the, the donation had given me an opportunity also to share my appreciation for how connected our. Uh, retiree and in, and not just recently retired staff members, uh, can even be with our schools and our students.
That's great, yeah. That is wonderful. Thank you. Okay, so, uh, all those in favor? Accepting the gifts? Thank you, it's unanimous. Okay, um, so now, Dr. Morris. We will move on to school committee planning and upcoming agenda items.
So I have the East Street, um, follow up that Mr. Zelmek and Mr. Horne, uh, were here tonight. Uh, I'd like to report or have Mr. more realistically have Mr. McPherson report on air quality testing, cause I know that's. High interest item in the community. Uh, I think we'll have both done definitely one of the two and, and I think likely both done, but I wouldn't wanna wait for the second to report on the first. Um, regionalization to the point of how helpful it's been to have those updates. I imagine that group's meeting some over the summer. Uh, for, for their feasibility, they'll certainly have a lot of information to share, cause their processes will play out. And enrollment working group, um, continuation of that as we discussed tonight. And, um, I'd like to have a, um, draft of my goals, uh, not for voting, but for. Feedback in that August meeting, so I can vote in September, so we can actually, I don't wanna critique ourselves. So we can have a, um. So we can start hit the ground running with goals and the evaluation process earlier in the cycle.
Um, any other, those, those sound right. Is there anything else? Um. Yes, Mr. Demling?
Uh, just a quick follow up from previous agenda items, so I, I just hate to see biar- wheels of bureaucracy turn slower than they need to. Um, is, do you think it does make any sense to have like a, a brief fifteen minute meeting before the regional meeting next week to vote that East Street School? Um, so they can move forward on whatever they need to move forward with, or, but did you, did you not hear that sense of urgency?
We did not hear that sense of urgency. I think that, um, you know, I think it is all things, people would just rather get them done. You know, quickly if they, if they can, but, um, there really is no, so, so I think that not to be mysterious about this, the fact that we have. Government changing in the fall means that no big decisions like this can actually practically happen until after that happens, right? So, um, I don't see any, any real reason to bring this to us, especially when we've got all these other issues that we're, we're working on, you know?
Which is that, that the town manager confirmed what Mr. Donas just said, that, um, that waiting till fall, waiting till, uh, late August won't. Um, materially affect the process that that group's going through. Uh, the other thing is, um, so I, I remembered that we have this bulletin column, our agreement to do a bulletin column that we haven't done in a while, but we have this kind of opportunity. We always talk about communication, engagement, um, so since we're not meeting till August, I didn't know if maybe we, uh, could, um. I don't know, empower the chair to, to move that ahead and, 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 and briefly mention some topics, I mean. There's, there's, there's the various initiatives that we're doing that we wanna get more visibility of, regionalization, dual language, um. Fort River, Fort River feasibility, um, there's also some potential funding advocacy issues that, that may come up. Uh, that may be an opportunity to educate the public on, whether it's, um, the, the sales tax ballot question, um, or, um. Or a foundation budget, um, depending on how, how advocacy shakes out now that fair share is gone. Um, or charter schools, which, which certainly may come up again in the future, educating sort of baseline one-on-one. Summer seems to be maybe a good time to do that, even though people are away, um, prior to the election democratic frenzy of the town of Amherst. So, any thoughts on that?
Great thoughts. I mean, I think, um, I'm trying to remember the last, the last column that we did. I wanna say it was March. Um, is that right? I can, I think that, that was, that was the time. Um, and yes, I think that all those things that you stated, uh, would make sense. You know, one idea that I have is that, uh, maybe we aim for just before school starts, um, that might be a good time. When people start to plug back into things that are coming up and that could be a good opportunity for us to raise some of the more critical questions that we want. Community input, just a flag for folks, like this is coming up, you know? Okay, so work on that. Okay. Um, and that was the, the chair and vice chair were, uh, previously, so.
Oh, okay.
You know.
So I'm giving myself more work is what you're saying.
Indeed, yes.
I withdraw this agenda.
Any other, uh, comments or topics for upcoming agendas or, okay? All right, um, so with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Excellent, this meeting is adjourned.